Good morning. It is now nine o'clock, and I would ask that you rise and join me in the invocation to be given by Chaplain Ralph Ishterwood, a chaplain with the Henry County Police Department, and he's also the pastor emeritus with Glen Haven Baptist Church in McDonough. And after that, we will then have our Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I didn't know when word got out I was gonna pray this many people'd show up. But there's gonna be a lot of decisions today, gonna be a lot of opinions expressed. And when we're saved and born again, we're filled by the power of the Holy Spirit. Would y'all say amen to that?
Amen.
And the Holy Spirit draws us together. And the Holy Spirit is, when we're two or more gathered in His name, the Holy Spirit is there to own and to bless. Would you say amen to that?
Amen.
And so let's remember that all day long, as we conduct business and as we express ourselves, let's have a testimony of love and compassion and cooperation and working together for the glory of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Heavenly Father, we are thankful that this county believes in prayer. We're thankful that our leaders believe in prayer. We're thankful, Lord, for the patriotism that's here, Lord, and the pledge allegiance to our flag. And, Lord, this is a vanishing element in many of the lives today. But Heavenly Father, we know what this country was founded upon. It was founded upon Your Word. It was founded upon the power of Your Holy Spirit as it works in and through our leaders. And continue to give our chairman leaders and all of our, all that's on this committee today and all the leaders that's here in this county, continue to give them wisdom as they make decisions that affects the lives of so many people, day in and day out. And Heavenly Father, as we meet together, we've got young people and young adults all over this county, they're watching how we conduct ourselves when we do business. So we pray that each and everything that is said today is said out of a heart of love and a life of compassion and concern. And lead God and direct, Lord, and we just pray for the very oracles of deity, the wisdom, Lord, that You give us as we express ourselves. We pray that that would be prevalent, Lord. And we just trust You, Lord, for Your personal, perfect will being done in everything that is done today on earth as it is in heaven. And, Lord, we thank You for salvation. We thank You for the born-again experience, Jesus, that You are the way and the truth and the life, and no one comes to the Father except by You. And we thank You, Lord, that this life is just a short while as we prepare for eternity. And we thank You for the assurance that we have when You're in our hearts as a born-again saint of God, and we know in whom we have believed, and we are persuaded that You're able to keep that which we've committed under You against that day. So thank You for our help. Thank You, Lord, for the blessings of living in a country that still recognizes You as Lord and Savior. And thank You for a county that still believes in the power and the purity and the presence and the purpose of prayer. And thank You for the opportunity that we have today to pray with these dear people and these leaders and all that will be conducting their business and stating their opinions. For we pray and ask this today, in the name of our Lord and our Savior that's above all of, that has redeemed us and has gone on to prepare a place for us, as we all that know You as personal Lord and Savior, will be spending together in eternity in Your presence, Lord. For we ask it in Your name, in Jesus' name, and all God's people said, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners for June the 6th is hereby called to order. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to our meeting this morning, especially those who are here for the first time. I know there are a lot of citizens here today wishing to speak on the Nash Farm matter. If you have signed up with the county clerk prior to the meeting, we will call your name during the public comments portion of the meeting, which is item 13 on your agenda. At this time, we will be conducting some county business which needs to be addressed. We request your patience with us while we get through our regularly scheduled agenda items. We will get to the public comment portion of the meeting just as soon as possible. We will now move forward with our published agenda. There are some amendments to be made to the published agenda, including, one, the removal of item four regarding the proclamation for TC Carter, which will come back to a future meeting, move item seven B, SPOS four calendar year 2017 district project list off the consent agenda to the second item after the consent item five B, after the planning and zoning item. We will remove item 10A, which is the Henry County DOT stormwater regarding the creation of the special tax allocation district for dam rehabilitation. We will remove item 11A, presentation regarding T-SPOS. And we will remove item 11B, a discussion item concerning amending the county code regarding the hotel motel excise tax. And we will remove the executive session and add a resolution to authorize the acquisition of real estate by eminent domain or negotiated purchase relative to campground road extension partial five. We'll be adding this resolution as item 17. And we will also take a 30-minute recess between 12:00 and 12:30 if necessary. I now call for a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, well, you've moved proclamation for TC Carter, item five, and we will now move to the proclamation for the Caribbean American Heritage Month, and we'll introduce Ms. Melissa Robinson to present that proclamation.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning, we have a proclamation recognizing June as National Caribbean American Heritage Month, whereas in June 2005, the United States House of Representatives unanimously adopted a resolution recognizing the significance of Caribbean people and their descendants in history and the culture of the United States. And the next year, the resolution similarly passed the Senate, culminating a two-year bipartisan and bicameral effort with President George Bush issuing a proclamation on June 6, 2006. And whereas the United States and Henry County, both melting pots of cultures and home to a variety of people, commemorate the uniqueness of others in recognizing June as National Caribbean American Heritage Month. And whereas during this month, Henry County celebrates the tradition and contributions of Caribbean Americans and citizens across our nation who are linked to the rich heritage of our Caribbean neighbors through family ties and businesses, and will continue to honor the history and strong legacy of Caribbean nations. And whereas, through the acknowledgement of this month, we hope to ensure that Henry County is reminded that its greatness lies in its diversity, which has helped shape the American dream. Now therefore be it resolved by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that June 2017 be recognized as Caribbean American Heritage Month in Henry County and encourages citizens to celebrate the history and culture of Caribbean Americans and their many contributions to our community. Signed by Chair June Wood, attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun.
Thank you, Ms. Braun.
And we have two representatives, one from the Caribbean American Chamber of Commerce of Georgia and another representative from the Caribbean Association of Georgia Incorporated.
Okay, for pictures. Thank you very much. We will now move to our, the consent agenda, and the following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda. We have SPOS item A, a resolution authorizing the chair to execute all necessary documents for conveyance of fixed assets to the water line, fire line, and sanitary sewer at Fire Station Number 15 to the Henry County Water Authority. Item B has been removed to the regular agenda. From our court, there would be a resolution to accept technology grants of $5,500 for the DUI drug court, $3,300 for the juvenile mental health court, and $950 for the resource court for a total of $9,750 from the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for FY 2017 for the Henry County Accountability Court Program. We also have an E91 resolution authorizing the renewal of the memorandum of agreement with the Georgia State Patrol relative to operational tower space on the Henry County Public Safety Radio Tower located at 1201 Old Jackson Road in Locust Grove. We also have an E91, one, a resolution authorizing the renewal of the memorandum of agreement with the Georgia Forestry Commission relative to the operational tower on the Henry County Public Safety Radio Tower located at 664 Industrial Boulevard in McDonough. And then our last consent item comes from the Public Safety Henry County Fire Department, a resolution appointing representatives to the Region Four West Georgia Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. I now ask, are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. I now ask for the, a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion?
So.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This ends the consent agenda. We're now moving to item eight from planning and zoning. We'll ask Mr. Dante Gibbs to come to present a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with creating new development standards for R2 zone developments on sewer.
Good morning, Chair Wood and Commissioners.
Good morning.
The planning and zoning item before you is for discussion purposes and is also a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with creating development standards for R2 zone developments on sewer. The Commissioners or the Board of Commissioners have expressed concern in some of your respective districts regarding the potential need for an additional zoning district that offers lots that are small, are larger than the R3 zoning district lot size minimum of 18,000 square feet and smaller than the R2 standard zoning district, a lot size minimum of 30,000 square feet. In addition, it has also been expressed to staff that there's a need for this potential new zoning district to also require sewer. And the understood goal of this possible BOC initiative is to create a zoning district that serves as a median between R3 and R2. And keeping that in mind, what staff proposes to the Commissioners for discussion is an R2 with sewer that simply falls right in the middle, in that the minimum lot size and all the recommendations are in red on the overhead, the minimum lot size will be half an acre, which equates to 21,758 square feet. The minimum lot width will be 112 and a half feet. And the minimum front yard setback will be 30 feet, which is comparable to the R3 zoning district. The minimum side yard setback will be 10 feet, which is also comparable to the R3 zoning district. The minimum heated floor area, which is comparable to the minimum, which is the median between R3 and R2 is 1,700 square feet on sewer. And then the sewage system will be septic or a public sewer, depending on whether it's R2 or R2 with sewer. And with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions and address any concerns.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Barn?
Dante, we've had several discussions about this in the past, and there's such a large difference between the 30,000 and 18 at the R3, and it's hard to get these houses fitted in. With a 112.5 width lot, does that give us enough to have side entry garages on all these lots?
It would depend. It's in the middle. In most cases, you would find, depending on the style of home, for ranch homes, you're probably looking at 30,000 square foot lot size to get a side entry garage, but for those that are not ranch-style homes, 112 and a half feet could possibly work. It just depends on how they're engineered and how the homes are designed.
And the other question I have, the minimum lot area, is that just, that's because it's a half acre, is that...
Yes, that's exactly one half acre.
And I don't know if the board has any other, but I don't know if rounding that up to 22,000 would be something the board would be interested in, but it looks good to me.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Commissioner Prince?
Dante, do you have a, an R3 comparison so the citizens can see what the difference is between R2 and R3?
I can provide that, but just off the top of my head, what you're looking at for R3, 18,000 square foot minimum lot size, you're looking at 30 feet, front setback, 10 foot on the side, 1,800 square foot heated floor area, and then a sewer requirement. That's, in summary, the difference between the R2 with sewer, R2 versus R3.
All right. And I agree with Commissioner Barn. I think 22,000 on the square feet, just a round number, just easier to hit. And also, the minimum lot width, you should probably just make it 115 than the 112. And let me explain real quick to the citizens what we're doing here and the function of this. In certain areas of the county, Kellytown, other areas like this, there are sewer available, and we've been asked for R3. And not every area in the county needs to be high density. So we're kind of going in the middle here between the R2 and R3, so that there is a, developer will realize a benefit from having the sewer but won't overdevelop the areas that don't need to be overdeveloped. So that's basically what we're doing here and trying to get in the middle, because we didn't have anything between three-quarters of an acre and basically a quarter of an acre. So we didn't have anything in the middle. So now with this, we will. So that's the function and purpose of what we're doing here. So, but everything else looks good. I appreciate you getting this together, but I would like to see 22,000, 115 on the lot width, and I'm gonna tell you why. When designing a house, we like to have side entry garages. It's gonna be very difficult to put a side entry garage in a 112-feet-wide lot. So 115 gives you a few more feet, and with your side setbacks, you'll be able to get a side entry garage on these lots, which is exactly what we want in some areas. So appreciate you getting this together for us, and it looks good.
My pleasure.
All right. Any other comments from any of the Commissioner? So we are hearing the suggested 22,000 for the minimum lot area and 115,000 for a minimum lot width. Is there a motion?
Chair, was this for discussion, or was this, we...
It's also a resolution to authorize staff to proceed, and we'll bring it back to the board for a motion, for a public hearing.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Well, we will now just, any other questions from the board? And if not, then we thank you for the presentation.
My pleasure.
Okay.
Will there be a motion on the resolution to proceed?
To approve resolution.
To move forward.
Okay, we have a motion, and then we have a second. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Holmes?
No.
Oh, okay. Any other discussions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we would now move to item B, which is a resolution approving the SPOS four calendar year 2017 district project lists and project budgets by Mr. Burkehalter, and that was removed from our consent agenda to this item. Good morning, Mr. Burkehalter.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. The votes of Henry County approved the SPOS four referendum. SPOS staff recommends approval of the attached SPOS four 2017 calendar year countywide and district project budgets, which is, you'll see, is attached as Exhibit A. The total proposed SPOS four 2017 project budget is $58,899,537. The total cash on hand on January 1st of 2017 was $34,546,75. And the projected SPOS four collections for the calendar year of 2017 is $25,993,752, for a total of $60,539,827. Staffs recommend and approve in the proposed SPOS four calendar year 2017 countywide and district project budgets totaling $58,899,537. And before I ask if anyone has any questions, an update to the board and to the citizens, we're now in the process of updating our website, which will reflect these, the progress of each one of the jobs. We should have that done by the end of this month, so if you go on the website and if it's the wishes of the board, we can come back to the board and do that presentation on the status of all the projects.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Burkehalter. We are now, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barn?
The only comment I have, Ron, I would like to see y'all come back and present everything where we are on every project.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Okay, if not, the floor is now open for a motion.
So moved.
There is a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion, comments, or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Burkehalter. We will now move to item nine from regarding a resolution awarding authorization of a bid for the classification and compensation analysis by Ms. Doris Patterson.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
This item is a resolution to award to the Archer Company, an RFP, to conduct a classification and compensation analysis. Before I actually go through the resolution itself, I have some information that I want to present to the board in the form of a PowerPoint presentation. The first question, just for informational purposes, what is a classification and compensation analysis? Classification and compensation analysis is a multi-faced project whose goals are to align the county's job descriptions with the employee roles and responsibilities. The project also is responsible for setting an equitable and consistent classification process and structure, and also conducts a market comparison of similar jobs for recruitment purposes, for planning purposes, and for retention purposes. The second part of the questions that I want to answer in advance are, why would we conduct a classification and compensation analysis? The analysis actually enhances the county's ability to recruit and retain a quality workforce. It puts us in a position where we can have clearly, carefully designed job descriptions, which actually accurately reflect the scope of the work for every classification. It will help us to become a more consistent, effective organization with logically constructed job classifications, where the positions actually can build upon each other, which would actually help in the development of our employees as well. I want to note that this project will have a phased-in implementation aspect already built in from the beginning. So when we have recommendations that will be brought back to us by our outside, objective, independent consultant, we will be presenting recommendations to you where we can actually phase in the recommendations and solutions that are presented, so that it doesn't create an extreme hardship on the board or on the county to try and fund this project on the back end. The roles and responsibilities of employees and needed skill sets, the working conditions change over time, and I have to note that it's been over 10 years. I don't know exactly the date, but I know that it's been longer than 10 years since this project has actually been done. It is recommended that every three years you have a review of your classification and compensation structure. So we're long overdue for this project. As I indicated, we will have an outside, independent, objective consultant come in so that we don't, we're not tempted to have any subjective analysis of our current organization. And then, once we get this updated, we'll be able to currently, to periodically review so that we can stay current. So very quickly, the objectives of this project are to strengthen the county's ability to recruit and retain qualified workers. It also will help us to develop a consistent pathway for internal equity. One thing that we want to make sure that we have available to us is a process where we are evaluating and classifying jobs based on the actual merits of the, of the positions themselves, not based on people that are actually in the jobs. We also want to make sure that we're analyzing the growth strategies and we identify our organizational need. As I said, it's been longer than 10 years since this has been done within Henry County, and our county has grown, our organization has grown, our staffing needs have grown, our programs and services to the citizens have grown. So it stands to reason that we would make our staffing needs and organization structure catch up with the growth that the county is experiencing. The next piece is that we want to make sure that we solicit input from all levels to maximize employee involvement. The piece about this project that's so passionate, that I'm so passionate about, that's so important to me, is that we will involve everyone in this analysis project. So it involves interviews with employees, as well as with managers, department heads, and the consultants will actually be talking to these people on a one-on-one basis. Not every single employee, but someone in every single job classification. And so when the recommendations are made, we can feel confident that we have actually done a full assessment of the needs and the opinions and the analysis and the responsibilities of every employee that actually works for Henry County. Lastly, the last objective is to utilize a market-based comparison for planning and to establish a consistent classification plan. So we'll be looking at other counties, we'll be looking at other jurisdictions, and we'll be looking in some aspect, not largely, but we will also look at the common business community, so that when we look at common jobs, for instance, like technology, for instance, we can look at how we fare against other employers and other entities. Our strategies for success of this project, basically want to put the county in position to be able to recruit and retain qualified workers. We know we have a very good workforce right now. We need to keep the good workforce that we have. So what this project will allow us to do is to analyze the roles, the responsibilities, what we've tasked our jobs with, what we've tasked our people with, and see if that, if we have adequately placed them and assigned the work to them. I will say, we'll possibly find out that some of our responsibilities haven't advanced with the times, but that's why this is important, to get this project done. We also want to be able to establish a strategy for addressing movement within classification structure. In several of our departments, we have levels, for instance, planning, planner one, planner two, senior planner. We've got to have a very consistent structure for being able to allow employees to progress through. to progress through those levels. So, if there's responsibilities that they need to, uh, meet before they can go to the next levels, but that's what this project will allow us to do. We also need to be in a position where we can provide training and, and education, not only to the human resources staff, but to our leadership staff, so that we have, um, the ability to establish and maintain equity as we go forward within our classification and compensation structure. Once we have a solid, strong structure, we should be able to move forward with that structure and build on it and not have to start over every time. Our final strategy is to utilize internal and external market-based comparisons. So, if we have an administrative assistant too that works in the courts, for instance, and then we have an administrative assistant too that actually works in the building department, those jobs should be aligned and the responsibilities should be, um, equitable and similarly placed. So, this project will allow us to go through that process in an equitable manner, it also will allow us to, um, phase in implementation over time, as I mentioned earlier. So, at the end of the project, when we come back with recommendations, we're not coming to the board and saying, okay, in the next six months, we're asking you all to do this and it's going to cost this much. We recognize that there may be a, a phase-in process that's going to happen, would, have to happen with this project. So, we will be prepared to give you a two- or three-year plan if necessary, so that we can phase this project in and have it, uh, actually implemented. Finally, I just want to go over the scope of the project. We have approximately eleven-hundred-and-sixty-four positions and approximately five-hundred-and-eighteen job titles that would be analyzed in this project. The project is anticipated to be completed within ten to twelve months. At that point, we will be able to provide analysis and job evaluation, uh, process. This would be for public safety and non-public safety positions. We also want to make sure that we provide an internal and market-based comparisons, as I mentioned earlier, um, and appropriate implementation options. We want to make sure that we also establish equitable pay recommendations and guidelines for phasing in the project over time. And then finally, ongoing review and maintenance is, is critical to the success of this project. We don't want to just complete the project and then put it on the shelf. We want to be able to, on an ongoing basis, it could be annual, it could be every eighteen months, whatever we determine is appropriate, so that we can maintain and improve, uh, this project as we go on. So, what I'd like to do before I entertain your questions is to, uh, go through this RFP, um, the resolution very quickly. Basically, uh, as I mentioned in the presentation, we have eleven-hundred-and-sixty-four positions and approximately five-hundred-and-eighteen job titles that we would like to have analyzed. The proj, uh, the project is going to include position analysis and a job evaluation process for all non-seasonal positions, for all public safety, for non-public safety, for regular, full and part-time positions. And the evaluation committee has evaluated, uh, all proposals and is recommending award of the RFP to the Archer Company in the amount of seventy-six thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Funding for this project is allocated in the Human Resources Departmental Budget. With that said, I would like to request that you approve the resolution presented before you, and at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
Doris, when you have the results back and we have employees currently in positions that don't meet the qualification, what would, what we do with them employees?
I'm sorry, I heard the first part of your question, but not the last part, if you have-
If we have employees that's in these positions and they don't meet the qualification for an compensation, what do we do with employees?
That's a great question, thank you for asking, Commissioner Wilson. No employee is going to be down-classified in this project. Some employees may be classified upward, though, if we recognize that we have, uh, employees that are classified, that are misclassified. Now, um, I can't give you the specific answer to the question in terms of what's going to happen, because that's going to depend on the consultant's recommendations. Of course, I'm, I'm assuming that we'll have to consider the classification and the job and the level, and how it compares with other jobs at that level, but I can tell you that no positions, uh, no employees will be down-classified in the roles that they're in right now. So, that's one of the things that the consultant, that we'll work with the consultant to help us develop the appropriate solution to that particular situation.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Barnes?
Uh, Ms. Patterson, um, you said it's been ten years and it, it probably is long overdue for us to do this, but I think maybe, uh, what Commissioner was talking about, if we got employees that are old-qualified and, and, and making more than their job requires, how are we going to deal with that? Are we going to cut salaries or are we going, um, uh, freeze salaries, or how are we going to approach that?
No, sir, it's never a good recommendation or a good practice to cut salaries or freeze salaries, as you all know. So, that, I can tell you right now, that will not be one of the recommendations that we will be bringing forward. Uh, again, the reason that we bring in an outside consultant and we have thoroughly vetted the, actually, during the entire process of going through this, because we posted it multiple times, we've actually seen at least six, uh, approaches to this kind of a project, so I am confident that when we work with the outside consultant who has experience in conducting these kind of projects, that we will come back to you with several recommendations, hopefully we'll have several that you can actually choose from, to, so that we all can come up with the best way to approach this project.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Holmes?
I mean, um, Doris, from the, um, director perspective, uh, when you look at educational levels, eh, in terms of the classification, are we going to be looking at putting those directors who have advanced degrees on par with some of the oth, other directors that have been around for a while?
I think, if I'm understanding your question correctly, sir, I believe part of what I'm hearing you ask is, are we going to give credit for advanced degrees, for instance? And then, when we have, uh, leadership positions in, not just directors, but assistant directors and associate directors, when we have leaders in position that don't meet the qualifications that the job now entails, how are we going to approach those? That would be part of the recommendation process, and I will say, I don't know if I clearly stated this earlier, but as we go through this project, there will be meetings that will be held with the county manager, with the department heads, and, and other leadership positions, where we address and make sure that we clearly identify the needs upfront. So, when we have situations like that at the back end, when we're in the position to make recommendations, we will have considered that. Typically, I've gone through this project at another employer, eh, so I can address it from my past experience, but typically, when that happens, uh, uh, recommendations will be made by the consultant to adjust salaries upward when needed. Sometimes, there may be some three-year plans put in place, for instance, for a leadership role and say, okay, you, we need you to have a degree for this position, so we will give you eighteen months or three years or whatever the timeframe in order to meet those, uh, new standards. And then, if you don't meet them, but, then we'll, we'll tell that person upfront what would happen. But what we won't do is tell a person today, we need you to have a degree, you don't have a degree, you're out of a job, that will not happen. That is not the intent of this kind of project.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking about the employees that are already here, the directors that are already here.
Yes, sir, I was too.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yes, sir, I absolutely was. Thank you, thank you for asking that question.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, um, Commissioner Clements?
Doris, thank you for the effort that you guys have put in this. Um, I've often said that our employees are our most valuable assets. It's from my understanding, based on this compensation plan, that we will be able to do more spa, planning, um, for the salary ranges for our employees as well, so it's not like when it comes out, we have to do something immediately, there will be time for planning and budgeting to compensate.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Other questions, comments? Okay, Commissioner Barnes?
Uh, Ms. Patterson, uh, we spent a lot of time on, uh, public safety during the reset, how's this going to really affect the reset that we've already done with public safety?
Actually, it should mesh very well. Uh, I will say that I was asked, I was tasked probably my second month here, which was about a year ago, with analyzing the public safety proposal that had already happened before I got here, and so I did have an opportunity to share it with several different consultants, uh, and all of them had indicated the same thing, that it was a good plan, that they didn't see anything inherently, uh, wrong with it at all, so it should mesh very well with this project. Uh, I don't expect there to be any surprises, if that's what you're asking from a public safety standpoint.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Um, my one comment is, I'm glad that we're moving forward with this, we've been speaking about it almost in every discussion, especially during budget time, so I'm glad we're moving forward, but I'm also glad to note that it's much less than what we had originally heard in the cost of what this analysis would call, so I look forward to hearing the results as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? You've heard the presentation from his, Ms. Patterson, and this is a resolution authorizing the bid, um, for this classification and compensation study, so are there any motions?
Some move.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion, comments, or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Patterson.
Thank you.
We will move further into the agenda, the item ten regarding, um, our Henry County DLT storm ward has been removed, the items for the county manager, kind of, um, item A and B have been removed, and we will move to item C, um, asking our county manager, Sherri Hobson Matthews, to come to present an ordinance repealing wrecker services and approval of wrecker services policy.
Good morning, Chair and Board Members.
Good morning.
There's an ordinance before you this morning repealing section three dash four dash three thirty-one through three dash four dash three forty-four of the Code of Henry County, Georgia, establishing a wrecker services policy for Henry County. As a number of you all know, for a number of years, we've gone back and forth in terms of our wrecker ordinance and really evaluating the ordinance to determine if it was really meeting the intent of how we created it. Um, after much conversation with our purchasing department, um, with our emergency management, um, agency, and with our wrecker, current wrecker providers, we think that we have a best bet here for you this morning. Um, what staff is recommending in lieu of an ordinance is a wrecker policy. Um, you did receive a copy of the policy or some revisions have been made to the policy, but they were just more grammatical errors that had been made, so no, nothing that is of substance. I did want to just highlight some of the changes in terms of the wrecker ordinance versus the policy. Obviously, the policy will repeal the ordinance, and it does establish a policy which will govern how wrecker rotations will be maintained. If you do or do not know at this time, right now, we have wrecker services that are on a wrecker rotation list, and what they do is they go out every third day. Um, the policy will also set forth basic tow fees for Henry County-initiated toes, that is part of the policy. I will tell you that we've had several conversations with our wrecker providers in terms of understanding what those basic tow fees are. I will also tell you that the policy will require that all of the basic tow fees be posted at every wrecker service in the lobby, so that if an individual is to come in, they are able to see what those basic tow fees are, so that is something that's new, that's added to the policy. The policy also requires a specific, um, minimum requirement for equipment for wrecker services utilized by the county, that is also included in the policy. The policy will also allow the county manager to designate a wrecker compliance liaison, and what the liaison will do is make sure that all of the regulations of the policy are followed. They will go out, they will do the inspections, they will make sure that the impound lots meet the requirements of the code, they'll make sure that they're in compliance with all of our state regulations, and they'll make sure that all of their employees have received their identification ba, badges, which we will require as well. The, initially, um, obviously, the policy does state that if you are going to submit an application to be a wrecker provider, that you would do it on October first. Well, given that it's June now, what we will do is require all of our wrecker services to apply no later than July first of this year to submit their application. Um, we think that that should be ample time for the wrecker providers, because a number of them are already providing the services and the applications have already been completed, so I don't foresee an issue with that. Um, one other interesting po, um, requirement is the policy requires that a wrecker service must maintain the minimum liability and property damage insurance prescribed by the Georgia Department of Public Safety and the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. Again, I did mention that we are now also going to require that identification cards be required and mandated for all approved personnel, um, before they can respond to a scene. Um, as you all know, when there is a scene of an accident, there's a lot going on and we need to make sure that everyone who's on the scene, um, should be there and not, um, people that are spectating. And again, finally, the policy outlines the suspension procedure for failures to comply with or violations of any of the provisions of this policy. Repeated complaints from customers regarding fraud, fraudulent or unethical business, practices, or alleging excessive billing of customers, if we have a wrecker service that pro, provides poor and/or efficient services which adversely affect the public safety or the duties of the investigating officer, or if we find that there is unlawful, unsafe, and/or criminal conduct, um, we can certainly look at suspending those wrecker services. Um, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we've heard the presentation, are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Prince?
Sherri, thank you very much. This has been an issue since I've been elected, this just keeps coming back up. Reading through this, this reads a lot like the state policy, so we, we kind of mirrored the state policy, and I think that's a good policy. My question, um, do we have a, a certain amount of wrecker companies we're going to use, I mean, when they apply, are we, just, they're going to go on a three-day rotation? How's this going to work for them to apply to, to work for the county?
They will continue to be on the three-day rotation, but you have to meet the minimum requirements, and one thing I did fail to mention is that there are minimum equipment standards that will be required. So, in order for you to submit an application, you have to make sure that you meet the general criteria, but that you also have the minimum equipment standards as well, but they will continue on the three-day rotation.
Alright, and the other thing, I'm not real keen on the government dictating how much a private citizen and a private company can charge, I just, I think that's overstepping our bounds a little bit, but I understand in this rate, and I know that the state actually has ways that they do this as well. So, these, these are competitive rates and we're, we're, we're good on that.
Yes, sir, they are competitive rates, and again, what we did differently with this policy is we involved the user group. Um, obviously, I'm not an expert in wrecker services, so we did have two or three meetings with our current wrecker providers, um, to hear from them in terms of what works, what doesn't work, so this has been a very inclusive process with, with our wrecker providers, and you're absolutely right, this policy pretty much mirrors the policy that the Georgia State Patrol has.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Other questions? Commissioner Wilson?
Currently, there are three wrecker companies, yes, sir.
So, what if we have six that want to follow, are we going to have a six-day rotation?
No, sir, we'll have to look at the, the, the rotations, how they're set up now, and the reason we only have three is because of the minimum requirements. You have to have a minimum lot size, and there are several wrecker services that are currently here in the county, but they don't meet those minimum requirements, and the reason you put those minimum requirements in is so that we can be able to provide the services if we have an incident where we have more than ten or fifteen incidents in a given week, and we want to make sure that they have the proper lot requirements and they have the spacing, um, to be able to have the vehicle stored there.
But we can't exceed three, correct?
We, we would have to look at the rotation, but yes, sir, we could, if they meet the minimum requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Commissioner Barnes?
Sherri, we, um, and I certainly appreciate you reaching out to all the wrecker services here and working with them to, uh, come up with this policy, and, and I like the policy, but I do have one question. On the storage lot, uh, the minimum, uh, fencing is six foot, and it didn't say anything about screening the fence or anything, but is the six-foot fence adequate?
That is, that is what is currently required, and so that's in keeping with what's already in place, and it, and that should be adequate, yes, sir. But obviously, this is a policy, and the good thing about the policy is it does give the county manager the authority to amend it if we feel like it's not working, and then bring that back to the board.
Alright, other questions? Alright, you've heard the presentation, no further questions, um, the floor is now open for a motion.
Before you make a motion, the board does need in the motion to include an effective date of the ordinance.
Okay.
So, the idea is, we need everybody to know when this goes into effect. I think my recommendation would probably be July one. That would give everybody enough time to understand the transition, to the extent they already don't, and then they can start getting their new applications submitted, so...
Thank you. Very good. Alright, we've heard the note regarding the, um, revision regarding the date, so, um, the floor is now open for a motion.
Like, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the wrecker service policy and implement it on July one, two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, we have a motion?
A second.
We have a second, any further question, comments, or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
And again, Chair, I would like to take this time to certainly thank our staff for doing an awesome job in developing this policy. Um, our purchasing department and our emergency management team did an excellent job, so thank you.
Thank you, we agree. Alright, well, we will now move into item twelve, um, a, an ordinance adopting chapter five-eleven of the Rules and Regulations of the State of Georgia Department of Public Health, and repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith. So, we invite up Mr. Jock Satter, our county attorney.
Good morning, the ordinance before you i, is really an update to keep us in compliance with the, with the current state regulations. The Department of Health in Jo, in Henry County manages onsite sewage management systems, which are septic tanks, food service regulations, which are the restaurant health inspections...
which are septic tanks, food service regulations, which are the restaurant health inspections, tourist accommodations, which are inspections of hotels and things like that. And what we do here is we adopt the state regulations. The state has been so kind as to renumber all of their rules and regulations, and our ordinance adopts them by reference to what the Board of Health adopted. So what we're doing today is re-adopting those three sets of regulations to really just fix the numbering, so that our ordinance matches the current numbering. We're not making any substantive changes to either the septic regulations, the food service, or the tourist accommodations. We're simply making sure our ordinance references the proper state regulations.
Heard our presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, no questions or comments, the floor is now open for a motion to adopt this ordinance and the changes thereof.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
A second.
We have a second. Any further comments, questions, or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Jock Satter, will you move on to item 12B regarding the presentation of the Henry County Water Authority and Two-Mill Tax?
There have been a number of questions, and I've been asked to provide some additional information about the Henry County Water Authority's Two-Mill Tax that appears on all of our property tax bills. I've asked Mr. Jim Henderson to accompany me today, and I know he's out there somewhere. Come on up, Mr. Henderson. Mr. Henderson has served for years and years and years as bond counsel on, I think, all of the water authorities' bond issues, for probably all of them that are outstanding now. And I'm going to ask him to give some, an explanation about sort of where, what the legal impact of the existing Two-Mill Tax is. I do want to give the board a quick update about the indebtedness. Currently, the total of all the water authorities' bonded indebtedness is approximately $203 million. The total debt service on all of that bonded indebtedness is approximately $22 million a year. And the last of those loans matures will be paid off in the year 2030. With that said, I'm going to ask Mr. Henderson to address whether or not that Two-Mill Tax is something that we can simply walk away from, or even put to a vote of a referendum of the public to discuss, so, Mr. Henderson.
Hello, Mr. Henderson. Hello. Thank you. I'm old, but I'm not quite old enough to have been involved in all the bond issues. My former deceased partner, John Mobley, was involved in all the bond issues since before I started to work, but then, but then he joined our firm, and I worked with him for a number of years. Just to be, just to be quick about this, there is a constitutional amendment that was part enacted by the voters, in effect, approved in 1968, that authorized the county, in conjunction with the water authority, but the county levies a Two-Mill Tax in order to build out and support the water and sewer system. That was continued, that constitutional amendment was continued in effect in the 1985 Constitution and continues to this day. In the last bond issue that the county approved in 2011, they covenanted it in the resolution. In other words, they promised in the resolution, as they have done since 1968, to levy the two mills continuously throughout the life of the bonds. That creates a contract with the bondholders. The resolution itself says they will levy the tax throughout the life of the bonds until the bonds have been retired or paid off. The revenue bond law in the state of Georgia provides that that's a contract with the bondholders that can be enforced, and it would be a default not to, in fact, levy the tax. And the case law is sort of replete that you can't impair a contract. There is a provision in the Georgia Constitution that allows for the repeal of a local constitutional amendment by resolution, by referendum, I'm sorry. That would have to protect, however, the existing bondholder covenant. And the law on that is quite clear, because otherwise it would violate the Georgia constitutional prohibition on the impairment of contracts, the U.S. Constitution on the prohibiting the impairment of contracts. There is a Supreme Court case in the last 20 years where New Jersey tried to repeal, New Jersey and New York, tried to repeal a law that said, "We'll only use tax proceeds to support the Port Authority bonds," and they wanted to use those proceeds for something else. And the U.S. Supreme Court said, "You can repeal that, but until the bonds are paid off, that covenant remains." In short, there is simply no way, absent retiring, repaying, paying off the bonds, to get out from under, if you will, the Two-Mill Tax Levy that supports these bonds. And the law is quite clear on this. This is not a matter of much interpretation in the bond community.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Henderson. Are there any questions or comments from the board regarding this presentation?
And I would add, I've discussed this with both Mr. Farmer at the Water Authority, Mr. Welch, the Water Authority's lawyer, and they both informed me, and I apologize, I don't remember the numbers, but the debt service, that $22 million debt service exceeds the revenue from the Two-Mill Taxes. I think Two-Mill Taxes is roughly $18 million.
It's 12-something, and it's projected to be 14, a little over 14 in the coming year.
And those funds are used, have been used, to build, make the capital improvements that the Water Authority has planned. They've got a comprehensive plan for a capital improvements plan that's been in place for a number of years, and it's nowhere near completed. It's nearly a billion dollars' worth of capital improvements, and that's where these funds have gone to, to fund this expansion of sewer lines, sewer plants, water treatment plants, things like that.
All right. Any questions? Okay, well, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Holmes.
I know we're about to move into the next section, and I find it appropriate to ask the county manager a question with regards to providing context to public comment. So with that said, I want to ask Patrick, who was around, around about 10 years ago, to walk us through how the county acquired Nash Farms, number one. And why don't you start around the time Maxie Price, a developer, purchased the property for $2 million, and if there was any interest before Maxie Price purchased the property to build a moderately income subdivision for the county to acquire Nash Farms before he acquired the property?
And let me say that in the order of the business that we have right now, Commissioner Holmes, out of due respect, we want to move into our public comments as scheduled, and because we do need to hear from the public on this, and then we will afterwards hear back from the county manager and the county attorney.
Madam Chair, I think it's important that the conversation is framed. My colleague, Dee Clement, has been receiving a number of hate emails, hate phone calls regarding this property being on hollow ground, which it's not. The war was fought in a totally different area. There is nothing, no history on Nash Farms regarding anybody being killed, anybody having a battle. That has been debunked in previous commissioner meetings, and I just think it's appropriate that we allow the county attorney to provide that context.
And I will say to you, Commissioner Holmes, in order to do that, we will need to amend the agenda, to address the agenda, because we are now moving into the public comments section, so Commissioner Holmes is making a motion.
I want to make a motion that we hear from the county attorney to hear the truth about Nash Farm.
We have a second. We have a second. Any discussion on that motion, a second? All in favor? Who wants to now have the county attorney to speak? Raise your hands in favor of that motion. Any opposed? Thank you. We will now move into our public comments. We will now move into our comments, public comments, and county attorney, we do would like you to lead into our decorum for today, and I will have comments after that as well. Okay, I'll come after you.
Madam Chair, under the Henry County ordinance that deals with public comments, citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this upcoming portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak should have signed up with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. The clerk has received a number of sign-in sheets. Each person who signed in will be permitted five minutes to address the board. Each person who addresses the board is prohibited from making personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of the board, staff, or other members of the general public. Any person who makes such remarks, or who utters loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language, or engages in other disorderly conduct which would disrupt or disturb or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the board meeting, shall, at the discretion of the chair or the majority of the board members, be stopped from presenting to the board and barred from further presentations to the board during the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you. Again, because we have a larger crowd than usual today, each person will come forward when the county clerk calls your name and states your name again for the record, you will have five minutes to speak on each, on your topic. We ask that you do be respectful and direct all comments to the chair. We intend to respect each of your First Amendment rights, but we also ask that you please respect the First Amendment rights of everyone else, and to do so in a respectful and direct comments again to me. Again, as the presenters come during the public comments section, there will be no interruptions by anyone, including us as Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners will not respond during public comments, and again, we ask that you address all of your comments to the chair. So, county clerk, will you begin that process for us?
Sure. I was going to call up five at a time. We have 55 total, so if you'd like to come to the podium in the order that I call you. First is Carl Swinson, Ethics and Government, Eugene Edwards, Flag at Nash Farm, Don Henderson, Flag Insurance and Water Authority, Barry Rowland, Dog Obedience Classes at Nash Farm, and Pete Franzen, Nash Farm.
Okay, as they come, will you please again just state your name and your address, please?
Carl Swinson, and we don't have to give the address, but I live in Stockbridge, the unincorporated part. I'm here to address the issue of the changes that are being made willy-nilly to the county, to be making it in somebody else's image. When you first came here, Ms. Clemmons, as you know, Ms. Woods, a piece of, a change was made to the county wherein you put the people at the back of the bus. One of the first things that you guys did, all of you, was to create this wonderful flowchart, okay? That is your, that is your pyramid of power here in the county. Only problem is, as is put on the CAPR report, you're not on top of the food chain. We are. We elect you to serve, not to boss. And when I see a Twitter account that says @deeclemmons@smokinghotboss, I am offended greatly. That takes nerve, and that is an embarrassment to the county. When I see Mr. Holmes going out there seeking support from the black community to come in here and give support to Ms. Clemmons because she wants to get rid of our history, I am offended greatly. We don't even know where you live, Ms. Clemmons. We don't know where Ms. Clemmons lives. We don't know where Bruce lives, although he's on record, on record, given testimony that he lives in DeKalb County. That's where he's supposed to be from. That's where she's supposed to be from. We don't know. You look at her financial disclosure, and guess what? It doesn't tell you diddly squat. So yeah, I'm offended. When you take the ability to be on the agenda away from the people, that offends me. When you put us at the back instead of the front, that's very presumptuous, and again, that offends me. And when you, Mr. Holmes, on-
Ms. Swinson, please direct your comments.
When Mr. Holmes on February 7th addressed this board and was upset with the fact that he wasn't going to get his prized sidewalk over and above the cost of the park that he has here, he made a slip. He said, "This is about the black African-American," he didn't say black, "the African-American You are reducing this board to a racist board. We never had that problem before. People move here because it's a very nice place to live, family-friendly, history-friendly, and you want to change that. All of you want to change that. Not just Bruce, not just Dee, you too. You changed the position of the public. You put us to the back of the bus, and we're tired of being put to the back of the bus. And this farm, this farm, Nash Farm, contrary to what you say, Mr. Holmes, was recognized by the Department of the Interior. Don't have to read it all, but you can.
No interruptions, Mr. Holmes. Commissioner Holmes is-
And also the Atlanta History Center, okay? Just a couple of documents that show this, this is historically significant, and it's part of all of our culture. Not any one of you, not just me. But I'm tired of having race injected into my county, and either you, as a board, get a grip on this and start censuring the people that would use that kind of language, or you're going to have real, real problems here. You don't have a problem raising every year 10 million or so, how much money you want the board to spend, nah, it's not a problem at all. But it is a problem to hear what the people have to say. Well, you're going to hear what the people have to say today. And I'm saying this, I am tired of the racist, absolutely bureaucratic, institutionalized, Democrat, communist nightmare that you're bringing to this county. Get real with the people. We are the ones that elected you. You are our servants. Act as such. And by the way, no T-Splost. We don't need any more taxes. We're done with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swinson. If you would state your name and address.
My name is Eugene Edwards, 551, Matilla Road, Stockbridge, Georgia. I'm also tired of racism here in Stockbridge myself, and I am President Edwards of the Henry County Branch of the NAACP. I'm representing Georgia NAACP, which is stated the oldest, largest civil rights organization. I'm advocating for the county commissions to keep Confederate flag from being flying again at Nash Farm Battlefield, which is a public park. I want you to know today, hate has no place in modern society, and without a doubt, Confederate flag continues to be a symbol of hate in America. NAACP State President and Civil Rights Attorney Francis Johnson said, "In time of deep division, we all need to stand behind the flag of the United States of America." We all have questions about Friends of Nash Farm, a private group that had operated the museum at the public park for nearly eight years. The supporters of Nash Farm have made the media mad, where their Confederate descendants have expressed hatred. We will not be silent about the Confederate flag issue anymore. We're tired of it. This storm has raised the city of New Orleans and led to the decision to move four Confederate monuments, including statues of General Robert E. Lee, which came down last week. As a member of the local Chamber of Commerce and the Henry County NAACP leader, I believe this can be a teachable moment in Henry County. History is important to all of us, but we must make sure that our rights are not being violated. Symbols of hate should be placed in a museum and used for a teachable moment and for a positive growth. positive growth. I am telling you, Confederate flag should never be flown in a place of sovereignty such as a flagpole. The NAACP stood for the First Amendment consideration many times, and there are dozens of cases which prove it. For example, Charleston, South Carolina, New Orleans, among others, who took, who stood for the removal of Confederate symbols and monuments. As Dr. King said, "Your life begins to end the moment that you forget things that matters." Several partners in major stores have volunteered to withdraw sales of Confederate flags and items, and just by naming a few of them, Walmart, eBay, Sears, Kmart, Amazon, and Google Shopping. We are no longer selling symbols of the represented hate, including Confederate flag. Many state bowling taking a stand against division. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Good morning. Will you state your name and address, sir?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. It sickens me to have to be here today because-
May I have your name and address?
I'm sorry. My name is Don Henderson. I live in McDonough, Georgia. It sickens me to have to be here before this commission this morning over this issue. I'm a born and raised North Carolina redneck, proud of it, born in the mountains. My family's lived there for six generations. During the Civil War, we were Irishmen, just wanted to raise our pigs and raise our cotton, grow our potatoes. We didn't want anything to do with the war. But my family had to make a choice. We made a choice to go with the Confederate states of America. Seventeen seventy-six, secession was legal. Secession is legal today, and that's what the South wanted to do. They wanted to secede. Now, the flag, Chairman Woodley, Ms. Clemmons is on social media saying that she wanted to unite this county. I can tell you what she has done did not unite this county. It's driven a wedge deeper than it was. We have folks that believe that flag is about their heritage. I believe it's about my heritage. It's about my ancestors. To me, it's not hate. Now, before you think I have racist tendencies, I've probably interacted in my young life with more African Americans than I did white people, because I was a musician, I played the blues. And most of the groups I played were with black groups. I lived in Washington, DC from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen sixty-five. So I know a little bit about the culture. Those folks are not taking, the folks I grew up with, they're not consumed with this hate. It wasn't about hate. The flag's not about hate. Ms. Clemmons has said the flag means different things to different people. To her, it meant racism, it meant slavery, it meant bigotry, it meant hate. It didn't mean that to me. So I'm supposed to capitulate to her sentiments and feelings about the flag and ignore mine? That's not what she was elected to do. She was elected to serve the people. And from the numbers I saw, there are a whole lot more folks offended at the action that was taken. Now, my question is this, how well is the Developmental Board going to be able to use this when a Fortune 500 company sees the dysfunction going on in Henry County over a flag? And they're going to want to bring their business to Henry County? I think not. I don't think they do. I want to know the answer to this question. Who ordered the flag removed, Ms. Wood? Was it the county manager? Because it falls, that falls under her authority. I don't believe it falls under the Commissioner's authority. And if the Commissioner ordered someone from the parks to go remove that flag, then I believe she overstepped her authority. And if the people who went out in the Parks and Recreation, individuals that went out and moved the flag, did it on their own volition, they need to be terminated. I, I was, you know, I was ready, I was ready to just throw it up, because we called our Commissioners, we talked, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and it seems like everybody speaks to, they say what they think I want to hear, and then when you get on the board, you do what you want to do. I moved here twenty-one years ago. I did not want to live in South Atlanta or Atlanta South. I moved here because I wanted a bedroom community. I was willing to commute the twenty-eight miles every day, and I commuted to the Atlanta Hartsville Airport. And when I retired, I liked the quiet. I like to see cows graze. I like to see cornfields. I like to see cotton fields. I like to see a dirt road every once in a while. But you can't get to one now, because once you pull out of your subdivision, you're stuck in bidlock. I just think that the flag flap has been absolutely disastrous for Henry County wanting to move forward. I think that nationally, the national attention that this has brought to Henry County, we look like a redheaded stepchild. And I was told a story the other day that the recent Hershey's moved here. It was because some fellows broke down in their car, and they took it to have it fixed, and the guy showed them what was wrong with it, didn't charge them to fix it. He repaired their car, and they got back together, and this committee said, "This is the kind of place we want to locate. This is the kind of people we want to be around." I can tell you this, I'll guarantee you, there's a lot of folks in America that don't want any part of Henry County. And I can tell you this, there are more folks in America that don't want any more part of this trying to rewrite and revise history. As the Commissioner said, she's not going to make an apology for wanting that flag gone. That's her prerogative. But to take actions on it, it infringes on my rights. As I said, I think it's ludicrous that anybody has to stand here and argue and plead that you leave history as it is. History, you can't change it.
You may approach. Please state your name and address, please.
I'm not, I'm not quite sure why I'm in this group, because my complaints are not pertinent to what these folks are talking about. But anyway, my name is, my name is Barry Rowland, and for the last thirty-plus years, I have been the obedience instructor in Henry County for Henry County Parks and Recreation Dog Obedience Class. I have been teaching the classes every Tuesday evening in the Activity Building since the purchase of Nash Farm by Henry County. I estimate that during that thirty years, over two thousand dogs and handlers have participated in this ten-week class. It is the only dog obedience class in the South Side of Atlanta, and draws from several counties, and provides a service to the residents of this county. I have made an effort to keep the cost of the classes reasonable, as comparable classes on the North Side of Atlanta are more than double the cost. I was informed three weeks ago that Commissioner Clemmons unilaterally demanded the class removed from the facility. This was not the result of the Parks and Recreation Department. On four different occasions, I requested a meeting with the Commissioner to discuss this matter and never received a return call. It was suggested that I have the classes at Heritage Park, in the arena, or at a dog park. Neither of these are practical, as they are subject to weather and temperature, thus causing cancellations and scheduling problems. The participants would have to provide their own chairs, they would be working in dirty conditions, and would be subject to distractions that are difficult when teaching the dog a new lesson. It is hard to motivate people to attend a class with these conditions, and the dropout rate for an outdoor class would be substantial, thus causing the dog to remain untrained. An unruly or uncontrollable dog is the biggest reason for them being turned in to animal control. I would be lucky to get people to attend two weeks with these conditions. It was also suggested that dogs should not be in a facility where food could be served. The dogs do not enter the kitchen area, and the building is cleaner when we leave it than it is when we arrive. There are dogs at dog shows all over the metropolitan area where dogs are in the same building as food service is occurring. Examples would be the major hotels near the airport, such as the Sheraton and the Hilton, where dog shows are held in ballrooms that have food service, and at the Atlanta Expo Center on Jonesboro Road, where three food service facilities are operating during dog shows with more than three thousand entrants. I have personally purchased, over the years, more than three thousand dollars worth of matting used for the safety of the dogs and the handlers, which is of no value to me should the class be canceled. I also purchased for the students at the beginning of the last class, leashes and collars valued over three hundred dollars, which I cannot return. I respectfully request that this decision be reconsidered, and the class be allowed to continue for the Henry County Parks and Recreation Department to continue providing a necessary service for the residents of this county. In this audience, there are a few stand-up police of my student, students that have participated. I'm sure many of you have received emails from others that would like for the class to be, would like for the class to continue. Please consider continuing this class. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Will you please state your name and address, please?
Pete Franson, Hampton, Georgia. And could I pass, pass these out to you guys? All right, I'm just going to explain everything I've read, everything I've seen. The first town hall meeting that Ms. Clemmons had at Nash Farms, it was discussed that it was a huge drain on taxpayer dollars. I actually had a meeting with her after the fact, informing her that taxpayer dollars were not paying for the farm. In fact, it was impact fees that were paying for the farm, because that's the way it was set up. The impact fees were paying for the farm, not, not taxes. And she suggested there would be a tax increase, too. And after I met with her, I thought, well, you know, that takes care of that. You'll have to forgive me, I got my wife's glasses instead of mine this morning. And let's see, where was I? Oh, yes, Ms. Clemmons also posted after that on Facebook that Nash Farm had no historic value. And the paper I just gave you, he had part of the paperwork I already had, so I just set it down. So I gave that to you to prove that it is. My family history doesn't have history on either side of this. My great-grandparents and great-grandparents, great-great-grandparents immigrated from Germany to the United States and homesteaded in western Oklahoma, so I don't have a problem on either side of this. But history is history, and it's sad, I know more about American history than some sitting here. Now, I was kind of wondering why she kept going back to Nash Farms, and it was number one on her agenda from day one, and I kept following it. Let's see, let's see. All right, Ms. Clemmons, then she proceeded to have the flag taken down, told the museum curator he could not sell the flags any longer, and he actually moved out due to the fact he was afraid of vandalism, because it was becoming a race issue because of Ms. Clemmons' actions. Now, they had a meeting up there, I'm assuming a lot of these people were there. I actually have a video of it, if you'd like to see it, of the huge waste of county resources of all, I mean, half the police department was there. And I don't understand that. I mean, you're wasting my tax dollars, you know, on this. Then the very next weekend, Al Sharpton showed up, for whatever reason, another huge waste of resources, because there was a whole bunch of officers up there again. And personally, I'd like to know if she knows the mayor of Lovejoy very well, due to the fact his intentions are to build apartments on the Clayton County side, and rumor has it, he would like to annex some more of Henry County. So I would really like to know where we're going with this. This doesn't have to do with history, it doesn't have to do with race, it has to do with real estate only. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Before the, before the next person speaks, we're going to at least identify the next five people that will come after this gentleman. So County Clerk, will you read those names?
And I don't, I don't know that he has signed up to speak. Did you sign up for public comment, sir?
No, ma'am. When I got here, they closed down the sign-in sheets. I'm the pastor of Trinity Family Worship Center in Henry County here.
All right. Well, we have an order, sir, so I'm sorry you had to sign up before the meeting began, and we also have a listing of individuals that need to speak, so-
Okay. Could I take one minute?
No, no, sir, I'm sorry. We want to follow the process that we have, and be fair to those that have already signed up, and I apologize, but we do need to follow the process. Thank you. So County Clerk, will you read us the next five names, please?
On the list, Sarah Billups, Confederate flag; Tony Pilgrim, Nash Farm Battlefield; John Hall, Nash Farm; Eric Tetter, preservation of Nash Farm Battlefield; Angela Christie Long Wheatley, Nash Farm Battlefield Museum flag.
Thank you. Would you please state your name and address, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, BLC members. I am Sarah Billups. I reside in Stockbridge, Georgia. I am a member of the Henry County NAACP. I serve as the community coordinator, and I'm here this morning to share some thoughts on the issue around the Confederate flag. It has been very disconcerting to see all of the anger and all the vitriol that has been going on around the flag. I understand the flag was, was removed. As a member of the Henry County NAACP, I work under the presidency of Mr. Eugene Edwards, who spoke before. We're also under the umbrella of the Georgia State Conference of the NAACP, also under the umbrella of the National Office of the NAACP. We have a national stand which says that the Confederate flag should not be flown on government property. Now, that is where we come from, and that is why I'm here today. And I want to be clear, I don't have any issue with people having pride in the Confederate flag, and no one is trying to rewrite history. We keep hearing that people are trying to rewrite history. Well, this is not George Orwell's in eighteen eighty-four, and you cannot rewrite history. However, for people who want to fly the Confederate flag, I think you've got the right to do that. I have no issue with that, but I think that where you fly it becomes the issue. The Confederate flag is known as the white nationalist flag. Well, this is my flag. This is the black nationalist flag, and I love this flag. These colors stand for something. Red stands for the blood that has been shed by my people in this country. Black stands for the color of our skin. Regardless of shade, we're still black. Green stands for the youth, it stands for the future, it stands for education, it stands for moving into the future in a positive way. This is my flag. I fly it whenever I want to, but I don't think I have the right to ask people to operate under the shadow of this flag. But if the Confederate flag is allowed to fly on government property, then this flag should also be flying right next to it. And there is a reason for that, because the issues, the issues around the Confederate flag are the same issues that are around this flag, they just come from different perspectives. I am an American of African descent. My people were held in bondage in this country, and they operated under the shadow of the Confederate flag. We had people who were murdered, lynched, all kinds of stuff, under the Confederate flag. This is the flag that we all should be flying. This is the flag that my brothers went and served in the armed forces under. The Confederate flag has been dead for a hundred and fifty years plus. I have no issue with people having pride in that flag. I have no problem with people wanting to fly it. Fly it at your home, like I do mine. When I fly this flag, I fly it in my yard, and I don't care who don't like it. It doesn't matter to me, because this is my flag. When you fly the Confederate flag and you fly it at your home, that is your business. I don't say you shouldn't have pride- I don't say you shouldn't have pride in your flag, I don't say you shouldn't have pride in your history. Do not try to force me to operate under the shadow of your flag. There is too much pain in my community under that flag. The Ku Klux Klan has used that flag and they waving and they have intimidated people for years and years, waving the Confederate flag and waving their guns. We don't do that and we don't call anybody threatening people's lives and threatening to kill people if you don't like that flag. That is wrong. You're talking about people who were your neighbors, people who were your friends, people that you called friend, and all of a sudden they're not your friend anymore? You hate them because of a flag? You have got to be kidding me. When are we going to learn to respect each other? When are we going to learn that love is more important than hate? When are we going to stop it? We have got to learn to live together, doing to others as you would have them doing to you. If you don't want people to mistreat you, don't mistreat them.
Thank you, thank you. You may now state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Tony Pilgrim and I'm from Henry County, Hampton, Georgia, District Two. I'd like to thank the lady here, she is very passionate and we agree. Neighbors, neighbors. Over the last week, I have been witness to a plethora of misinformation, of slanderous contempt for what many of us consider family. While falsely positioned under the banner of neighborly intention, many have proved that talk is as divisive a sword as one could exhibit. The words "stand up against hate" have been a false battle cry for those who have refused to sit down with those of us who hold different insight into a complex and difficult time in American history. You tell us that we need to pick up a history book and read into why you feel a certain way, but have you one time asked those of whom are our ancestors why we look at history differently? We are accused of revisionist history, but I ask you, are we guilty of revising history when we intend to tell the entire story? Is it that you think that your knowledge is superior or that we are just fools who took a high school history class and based our entire way of thinking on those few courses? We are told to read the words of Confederate leaders, we have done that countless times. You must remember that we are students of the era of 1861 to 1865. Yes, we do know that four of the 11 succeeding states mentioned slavery as a reason for secession. A reason, not the reason. Not one, excuse me, one would simply just read the entire ordinance of secession for a clearer understanding and further insight. Remember, at the time of the firing on Fort Sumter, there were more slaves in the Union than in the Confederate states. The addition of West Virginia as a slave state six months after the Emancipation Proclamation and the slave states of Delaware, Kentucky, Missouri, Maryland spoke of the moral character of the North. You could not own slaves if you were not loyal to the Union. Lincoln went to state and said, "We denounce the lawless invasion by armed force of the soil of any state or territory, no matter what pretext, as among the gravest of crimes." On March 4th, 1861, Lincoln stated in his first inaugural address that "I have no purpose, directly or indirectly, to interfere with the institution of slavery in the states where it exists. I believe I have no lawful right to do so, and I have low inclination to do so." Forty-two days later, Lincoln illegally, without the consent of Congress, called upon the states to provide 75,000 men to invade the southern states. Many argue that the South started the war and the first shots were fired on Union troops at Fort Sumter in April of 1861, but I ask you to read of the firing on Confederate troops by Union guns at Pensacola, January 8th, 1861. All Americans in the 21st century can garner absolution in the passing of the 13th Amendment in December of 1865, but the 13th Amendment we know now differs substantially from the first one proposed. The initial amendment would have made slavery constitutional and permanent, and Lincoln supported it. This amendment, known as the Corwin Amendment, proposed to do three things. First, to protect slavery by giving each state the power to regulate the domestic institutions within its borders. Second, to dispossess Congress of the power to abolish or interfere with slavery. And third, to make itself unamenable by providing that no amendment shall be made to the Constitution that would undo the Corwin Amendment. All this offered to the South if they would simply return to the Union and pay their taxes. Southerners saw this then and now as hypocrisy on behalf of the North and the United States government. Abraham Lincoln stated, "Any people, anywhere, being inclined, having the power, have the right to rise up, shake off the existing government, and form a new one that suits them better. This is a most valuable, a most sacred right, a right which we believe is to liberate the world." The Nash Farm Battlefield was part of Lovejoy Station Battlefield in the summer of 1864. Two armies gave their lives for a cause in which they believed. Nash Farm, excuse me, some have said that Nash Farm is an undocumented battlefield. It is our findings that the American Battlefield Protection Program, the Civil War Trust, and the United States Department of the Interior disagree. With over 3,000 artifacts pulled from the fields of Nash Farm, we tend to concur with that fact. In conclusion, there are many here today who stand with anyone, regardless of race, creed, who is affected by the hatred of a few. We are neighbors, we are a diverse community, including those with Confederate ancestry. We especially denounce those who would use our flag for such extreme behavior.
Thank you, sir. The time is out now. Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We will now move to the next individual. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
God bless everyone here today.
Thank you.
My name is John Hall. I live in Dublin, Georgia, Lawrence County, and I just want to put this here, I want to make a point. Ms. Wood, do you mind if I approach the Georgia flag?
No, sir, please, if you'll stand there, we're fine, thank you.
Can I approach the Georgia flag?
If you'll just, you can address it from where you are, sir, thank you.
I heard the comment earlier about the Confederate flag, and I wanted to point out that this is the Confederate battle flag. The state flag is the first national Confederate flag. So based on your comment, as far as a Confederate flag...
Direct comments to me, sir, I'll be fine, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. As far as a Confederate flag not flying on a flagpole, the state of Georgia has a Confederate flag flying on its pole. So, but more to the point, Ms. Wood, you had made a comment that you support the education of history and the heritage of our citizens throughout this county, including the balanced education of the Civil War and American history. I went to Nash Farm as a speaker, I've written a book about my Confederate ancestor and his letters, and I'd never been to Nash Farm before, and I went in and they had a beautiful museum, but as far as a balanced approach, I was very shocked that there was more Union stuff in the museum than Confederate. I mean, as a Southerner, I looked towards Grant and Sherman as bad guys, but they had a balanced approach there. There was nothing there that was unbalanced, I guess. So as far as saying we want a balanced approach for education, I thought it was already there. I think it's a shame what's happened here. I live in Dublin, Georgia, and Dublin has made a big effort recently for Martin Luther King. The first speech that he gave when he was a little boy was in the African church down in Dublin, and a lot of white people and black people and everybody got together and supported that. I supported it too, I thought it was a great idea, bring business to Dublin, to Lawrence County. But as far as what's going on here, I see a lot of division here, a lot of anger, a lot of hate. It's easy to hate. It's a lot harder to try to get along. Now, I don't know the lady who started all this, but I do have a picture of what she said, and it says, "Be the change you want to see." Museum says it's closing because county asked them to remove Confederate flags. That looks like to me that she's real happy about this and her whole point was to get those white folks that got a Confederate flag out there. That is no way to get along. Now, y'all are on the commission, y'all are smart folks. I just hope that Henry County can work this thing out. I hope y'all will let the museum come back. You know, as far as flying a Confederate flag out front, like I said, there's three poles out there. You still got a Confederate flag flying, the state flag of Georgia. So, I just came here to say that I've been to the museum, I felt it was balanced, I think y'all need to work it out, hopefully have the museum back. Look for tourism, look at those dollars, people want to come to the South. During the Olympics, people came looking for terror. They came to spend their money. People can come to Henry County with this battlefield and spend their money, why don't y'all focus on that? Why do you got to sit here and have a race war? Because that's where it's going to head to. Down in Dublin, we don't have that, we all get along, black folks get along, white folks get along. I grew up in Atlanta. This is pretty close to Atlanta, but I hope y'all can stay to be Henry County if y'all just try to get along.
Thank you, sir.
You may approach now with your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Eric Tutter. I'm currently a certified Georgia educator in the metro Atlanta school system, and I'm also a, I teach US history in that school system. I'd like to address three points in support of the Nash Farm site. Number one is the importance of history. Number two is the distinct importance of Nash Farm to history. And number three is the importance of preserving and maintaining historic sites such as Nash Farm. First, why is history important? As a teacher, I experienced firsthand the general lack of knowledge that the majority of my students have about history. As Edmund Burke famously said, quote, "Those who do not know history are destined to repeat it," end quote. I would add to this well-known line and say that those who do not know accurate history are destined to repeat it. Shelby Foote, one of the most respected historians in modern times, said, quote, "The Civil War defined us as what we are and it opened us up to being what we became. It was the crossroads of our national being." History from numerous standpoints and perspectives needs to be accurately shared with future generations and the general public, regardless of our personal agreement with every viewpoint. Imagine a trial where the judge and jury are only permitted to hear the prosecution side of events. How fair would the judgment on that trial be? The same goes for history. One of the largest breakdowns between the North and the South that led into the war was a differing view on how the United States as a country was originally established and how much power the people should have in the federal government. No one can make an educated argument that slavery had nothing to do with the war, as it did play a significant role. However, accurate history does not support the argument either that the preservation of slavery was the original cause or even primary cause of the war. In fact, the morality of slavery was not introduced as a factor until, in the war, until the Emancipation Proclamation in 1863, two full years into the war. Due to the widely perpetuated inaccurate viewpoint that the Civil War was all about slavery, symbols of the Confederate states are perceived as racist and offensive because they had been grossly misrepresented by both sides as having pro-slavery sentiment. This could not be further from truth. One of the most well-known Civil War figures, Confederate General Robert E. Lee, said, quote, "Slavery as an institution is a moral and political evil," end quote. His wife, Mary Custis Lee, even taught slaves to read and write, which at the time was against the law. And yet across the country, statues and memorials of this American veteran are being removed simply because he was a Confederate general. Therefore, you can see how those who do not know accurate history are trying and sadly succeeding in their quest to erase parts of history for future generations. Second, the Nash Farm site is a piece of Georgia's history that needs to be told. The continued preservation of the Nash Farm Battlefield site is critical to telling the accurate history of the fall of Atlanta. Nash Farm played a crucial role in Sherman's approach and capture of Atlanta, not once, but twice. First, Nash Farm was the site of the largest cavalry charge in the history of Georgia when Union cavalry charged Confederate cavalry in the aftermath of their failed raid to cut the Confederate supply lines flowing into Atlanta. Second, Nash Farm was also the site that saw part of the Battle of Lovejoy Station, which was integrally involved in the Battle of Jonesboro and ultimately the fall of Atlanta to Union forces, having a domino effect on the rest of the war. The capture of Atlanta secured President Lincoln's reelection, greatly demoralized the South, and began to extinguish the fighting spirit in the Confederate Army. The Atlanta campaign ultimately led to the Confederacy's surrender in April of 1865 and brought about the reunification of the United States, which established our growing influence around the world for the next 150 years. Therefore, you can see how even small battles like Nash Farm are crucial in the outcome of the war and rippling effects on the rest of history. Finally, why is the preservation of historic sites important in history? Historic sites such as Nash Farm give those who visit them a unique understanding that cannot be experienced any other way. Study after study of educational techniques provides evidence that experiential teaching methods are by far the most effective for the long-term retention of knowledge. This applies not only to our schools, but to the general public. Visitors to historic battlefields obtain a better grasp of the battle and the conflict as a whole, learning and visualizing the movement of troops amid the existing terrain, discovering on both sides the soldiers' motivations for continuing their cause of fighting, gaining empathy for those who were involved in honoring the places where many fell. This is a unique and priceless knowledge that can only be attained by visiting a historic battlefield. This unique knowledge and immersion into history has been and continues to be critical to the continued development of our country. In conclusion, I'll stop there because I won't be able to get through this last part, but thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Before our next citizen come, we'll ask the next five to be named as well before she speaks.
Teresa Townsend.
All right, thank you, ma'am, and if you will state your name and address, please.
Angela Christie Long Wheatley. And I'm from Fayetteville, Georgia, but my mother and my daddy's family have been here for eight generations. I held an event in February to honor the Black Confederates and the former president of the Asheville Chapter of the NAACP, Mr. H.K. Edgerton, was my keynote speaker, and he was absolutely on the side of keeping this flag. After much thought, prayer, soul-searching, and countless hours of research, I'm writing this heartfelt letter requesting respectfully that my opinion as an eighth-generation resident of this state be heard and offered equal weight to that of my neighbors. I've actively encouraged my children to treat all people, their beliefs and opinions, with respect, regardless of how foreign or different from our own they may be. I've taught them since birth not to judge others on looks, possessions, or station in life. I firmly believe God created us all equal and everyone deserves to be treated with respect and kindness. I've taught them to always make good choices and that right is right and wrong is wrong no matter who is or is not doing it. And most importantly, I've always taught them never to blindly believe or follow anyone and to think for and speak up for themselves and their beliefs and to question everything they find questionable. I do not tolerate dishonesty nor will I allow any type of behavior that would imply they believe themselves to be better than anyone. On the same note, I expect them to respectfully assert their needs, boundaries, and expected level of respect. With all this being said, I feel I simply must express my extreme dismay at the complete lack of respect shown for my own culture and heritage, as well as the many fallacies commonly set forth as fact which lack legitimate historical evidence. The truly biased and selectively omitted atrocities committed against my direct bloodline is beyond reprehensible. It is not my desire to belittle another's belief system or any people's unique struggles only to express my expectation of equality in the truth taught. If provided all available documentation, any sensible person would likely come to the common sense conclusion that the perpetuated fallacy that 100% of people of Southern descent fought in the Civil War and died so that less than 20% might maintain their aristocratic, barbaric institution of human slavery is ludicrous. I am grateful for the opportunities afforded to my children to learn about such great people as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his nonviolent approach to change and Ella Fitzgerald who survived things the women of today might crumble under. If it weren't for Black History Month, we might never have researched these great people. It's this that I want. I want children of every background to learn from the peacemakers and rejoice in the God-given talents of every ethnicity. There are beautiful and brilliant people of every race, likewise, there are monsters from all. Even a small child knows that without two halves, you only have halves. Even a small child knows that without two halves, you only have half a pie. I don't want half, that's just not good enough. Until all people are provided with both halves, we remain divided by ignorance. But with both halves, we can be whole and the indivisible land of the free who proudly defend liberty and justice for all. I would beg of you all to never accept half the pie when you paid for the whole thing because as soon as your neighbor is forced to accept half, how long do you think it will be before you're also forced to accept only half? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. If you'll state your name and address.
Rusty Perkins, current resident of Fogg County. Henry County, class of eighty-nine, United States Marine veteran, and a living historian. I go around and I visit different sites. And, you know, growing up in this county and going to school down here, the racial divide wasn't here thirty years ago. And it's sad to see what this county's becoming over a flag. A flag that my great-great-grandfather fought under. He didn't own a slave. He didn't go to preserve slavery. He went for his rights. He went for what he felt was a just cause. Over the last seven years, being a living historian and participating out at Nash Farm Battlefield, I've talked to people of many different races, different cultures, different countries. Nobody's ever walked away out there, as far as I know, with a hatred of the history. They come to the battlefield to try to actually learn a little bit. Myself, I wear both federal blue and I wear Confederate butternut, and I'm proud of both. I go out to actually represent the blood that's in the soul of the men who fought and gave their life, the 750,000 men that fought for what they believed in, whether it be for slavery, whether it be for the taxation aspect. You know, I'm not here to defend slavery by no means. It's, it's a, it's a black mark on this country. But the fact of it is, is history. There's nothing that we can do to get rid of it. Well, I guess there is things that we can do to get rid of it, but the fact of it is it's still there. And if we don't learn from our history, we will repeat. And the racial divide, you know, is, is something that I learnt during the time that I was in the Marine Corps, you know, is, is taught. There is no black, there is no white. We're all green. We're different shades of green. We're dark green, we're light green. And until citizens of this country start actually coming to grips with that, that we are one people, just a little different shade, a little different flavor, we'll never be able to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sharon Betzel, Hampton, Georgia. Chair, I appreciate you allowing me to speak and fellow commissioners. I've been disappointed with the media and how my district has been represented. Madam Chair, I used to be an employee for Henry County and never once did any of the commissioners ever step out of their position to tell me or instruct me to do something. They never stepped over that boundary. I had a supervisor that oversaw my work. They also had a supervisor. And we also had a county manager. We also had human resources. Commissioners didn't come and instruct us to do anything. Now, someone has stepped all the, over the boundaries here. And they represent my area. And a lot of people in my area are very unhappy. You know, I've heard that that person was offended by those flags. And I thought about this and I said, you know, first and foremost, I'm a Christian and my Savior died on a cross. And that's part of history. So do I want them to remove all the crosses because I'm offended? Hmm, I think not. What it does for me on a daily basis reminds me of where I used to be and where I am today because of what happened. I'm a big believer in history. And the Confederate flag is a part of history, whether we like it or we don't like it. It, it's, it is, it's a part of history. Nash Farm is a museum displaying things of that part of history. If you're offended by it, then don't go in it. Very simple. I don't go, I don't go places that I get offended. I understand, I have great love for my country. I have great love for Henry County. I have great love for all of the human beings. I try to respect them, but I get offended when they get offended at just, just being offended. They, it's like they want to find something to nitpick about. Hey, we got kids coming up. We got kids that need to be fed. We got people that we need to get off welfare. These, there's, how, how many people are in prison right now? Come on, there's so much more important things than worrying about something that happened years ago. Let's focus on what we need to concentrate on. And that's each other and helping each other and not try to be a, a, a thing that divides us. Let's be something like the cross that brings us together. And quit being offended by all that garbage. It's just, it's history, we can't change it, but we can learn from it and we can grow from it and we can teach our childrens, if we know, if we teach them the truth. I love it. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. If you'll state your name and address.
I'm Charles Lunsford. I'm the official spokesman for the Georgia Sons of Confederate Veterans. Madam Chair, the culmination of the historical research that resulted in the Nash Farm Battlefield Park, I'm intimately aware of that because it was a thirty-year process. Atlanta historians Franklin Garrett and William Scafe, who wrote many books on the Atlanta Campaign, and my friend Mark Pollard, who's an archaeologist and researcher and the official historian for the Sons of Confederate Veterans, searched for where that battle took place for decades. The reason they couldn't find it is because it was a cavalry battle. It was on the move. There were horse soldiers fighting against one another and it was constantly moving. The quest was to find where they hit, where the battle took place. Theories abounded. But Mark Pollard and his associates went back to the original old records and manuscripts and narrowed it down to a small area. And they got their metal detectors out and they're archaeologists from the University of Georgia, and they went to a couple of spots and they found it. They found it through metal detecting. And when they, when they finally got permission from the private landowners to start looking for stuff, thousands of artifacts came up out of the ground, proving exactly what happened, who was there by the buttons that were on there, that fell onto the ground, and what had happened there. They could determine exactly which way the bullet shot because of the way they went into the ground. These thousands of artifacts came up and were, were a joy to the Atlanta Historical Community, Community because they had found a very important battle. So important that the highest authority of battlefield identification in America designated it a Tier One Battlefield, which means it was extremely important to the war. As the historian mentioned a minute ago, it set a domino effect to the ending of the war, right here in Henry County. And I know that was presented to the board in the past by Mr. Pollard and shown to you. And the tourism documentation that came from the, the Georgia Department of Tourism showed that it would be a great benefit to the county to have a battlefield park there. How could anybody oppose that? And at the Battlefield Park, I will, I will agree with the gentleman that got up here early, when you go in the museum, it's heavily weighted toward the Union. It is. There was very little Confederate stuff in there. It was mostly Union stuff. But then, there were mostly Union troops in that battle. There's a monument out front that shows all the dead people that were killed at that battle. Most of them were Union. I can understand the balance, the excellent balance they put in that museum. Now, as the spokesman for the Sons of Confederate Veterans, I've been doing this for many years. And I know many years ago, I was going to be on a television program in Washington DC and I was going to be talking to the late Earl Schenholster, the Regional Director of the NAACP. And in the limousine going from the airport to the TV studio, he looked at me and said, "Charles, we don't hate you. We just don't want the Confederate flag to fly over the state of Georgia. We want to change the state flag. We don't care about the monuments. We think things like that should be in museums." And you know, I took him at his word. I was suspicious. I says, "Yeah, sure, that's all you want." But in late years, long after his death, we now get an unrelenting attack on everything Confederate, all Confederate history. Now, history's important because the history of the Civil Rights Movement showed that during the entire Civil Rights Movement of Martin Luther King, he never once said anything bad about the Confederacy or the Confederate flag. I asked his son about that, why that's true. He didn't know. I'll tell you why it's true, because he said, "We need to accept one another, warts and all, and join together in a multicultural, tolerant, diverse society. To do anything else is wrong." And I find it, I find myself in a very strange position up here preaching the Martin Luther King doctrine. Because people are being intolerant of me, people are being intolerant of my culture, they don't want the diversity of my folks and my stuff being in this county, and they are intolerant and being hateful towards us. It's the world upside down. Yes, history's important. Please go back and read what Martin Luther King himself said, which is today still amplified by his closest assistant, Andrew Young. Go ask him. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Would you please state your name and address, please?
Good morning, Chair. My name is Mary Lynn Strickland. I now reside in Delanauga, Georgia. I made the two-hour drive down here because I resided here in Henry County for ten years. My ex-husband was a Gwinnett County US History Teacher. And for twenty years, we both did living histories and reenactments so that we could preserve history, so that we could teach the younger generations what really happened, what has been falsified and changed in publications. And I also would like to make note here, a part of life that has been for hundreds of years, dating back to 1776, has been the Dems versus the Republicans, the immigrants versus naturalized citizens, and Blacks versus White. History that of all of us, which has been brought to America and to where we are now. History whether Southern or Northern, Eastern or Western, wherever it is written, is to be learned from, not to divide us, just as during the Civil Rights, Blacks and Whites came together to fight for the same cause. Public representatives are to help everyone as a whole and bring the community together to help each other out. What is being done by you doesn't show this, but rather tearing us apart over assumption of public display. Assumption can be a dangerous thing. People assume that racism is held because of displaying a flag, yet Blacks and Whites work the same jobs, making the same pay, and in cases, they're good friends. Just like this morning, I saw salutations being exchanged between a Black and a White gentleman. They even embraced each other. That did not look like animosity to me. And they probably descended from the same ancestors who fought during the Civil War. You have to have, you want to have the flag over Nash Farms removed because it dates back to the Civil War, which is assumed was fought for one reason and yet was fought for another. Some notes that have been overlooked. Did you know the flag on Nash Farms' property was flown by the Army of North Virginia from 1863 to 1865? A similar flag was used during the war by the Army of Tennessee under General Joseph E. Johnson. This same flag was known as the Second Confederate Navy Jack from 1863 to 1865, after which the government no longer recognized it. However, people flew it in memory of the family and people who died. Did you know that there was 93,796 African-Americans who served for the South during the Civil War? Do you know who all fought for the flag of the United States that we proudly fly and people burn to this day? They don't care about it, but yet we take pride in what we have. Let's take a look at history back to the War of 1812 and the Revolutionary. Henry County was named after an important leader, Patrick Henry, who lived May 29, 1736 to June 6, 1799, a different time period than the Civil War. We're all aware of his involvement during the Revolutionary period and what his works did to free us from England's control and build our democracy. Did you also know that in 1754, as a wedding gift, his father-in-law-to-be gave the couple six slaves and 300 acres? By 1779, along with his cousin and her husband, Henry owned a 10,000-acre plantation, is also recorded having purchased up to 78 slaves. Because of his doing this before the Civil War, does this mean Henry County's name should be changed despite it being on the National Register of Historic Places? Also found in Henry County is the name of Hampton, which was named after Brigadier General Wade Hampton, who lived from 1752 until February the 4th of 1835 and was an American soldier in the Revolutionary War and War of 1812. He was a soldier, politician, two-term US Congressman, and may have been the wealthiest planter and one of the largest slave owners in the US. At his death, it was said that he was the wealthiest in the US and possessed some 3,000 slaves among his holdings. Should the city's name be changed because of this? At the turn of the century, was named nine, nine of Atlanta's historic streets renamed to honor people who were involved in the Civil Rights Movement. Why shouldn't we homogenize things? You want to take our flag back, then why don't we take our streets back? Everybody still knows them as Peachtree Street, as Harris Street, our historic monuments. Why don't we have those back if you want to take our flag? Does it seem fair? The democracy is changing things. And democracy is also known in North Korea as the Democratic Republic of North Korea. Also in Germany, before the World War II, it was known as the German Democratic Republic. If we take this up and keep going the road we're going, we're going to wind up being in the democracy that they have of a socialist society where we have no freedoms whatsoever. Isn't that what we came here to America for, was to make a democracy of our own and break away from corruption and from control? Thank you.
Thank you. Before our next speaker come, we will ask for the next five names to be read for public comment.
Mark Hembry, David Golden, Tim Hawkins, Simeon Nunnally, and Bill Tony.
Thank you. You may approach with your name and address, please. Thank you.
My name is Teresa. I live in Stockbridge, Georgia. The only black and white that I see is on paper. Facts that Nash Farms is and will always be a battlefield. I'm in, I'm here in supportive. I'm in, I'm here in supportive of bringing Nash Farms Battlefield back to its current state. I also am here in support of legally filing a petition to remove Dee Clemmons from that chair. she broke the law. She committed a crime. She did not come to the board nor to the people, the taxpayers of Henry County, to address Nash Farms. She took it upon herself to do what she wanted to do. She's made comments that over 50% of Henry County is African-American. What if I was the only white American woman left in Henry County? What would you do with me?
Speak to me, please.
I don't see color. Where I work, there are so many black people that are so good to me. Never once have I ever felt, and I work outside of the county, never once have I ever felt that I needed to defend my color until I come to the place where I live, where I reside, where I pay taxes, and I'm having to be made feel to be ashamed to be a white American woman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. State your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Tim Hawkins. I'm from Houston County. I live in Kathleen. I'm here this morning to talk about Nash Farms Battlefield and the importance of Nash Farms to our history and also to Henry County for that fact. In, in One Robbins, I'm the Camp Commander for the SCV camp in, in that particular county. And I'm also the, the State Captain for the Mechanized Cavalry, which is part of the, part of the SCV. And that enables me to travel all over the state, visiting Confederate cemeteries, visiting Confederate Battlefields. And as I do that, I begin to see the importance of our history in each of the locations that I visit. Chickamauga, Grizleville. Grizleville was a, was a, a small skirmish with, of old men and young boys. But that piece of property is set aside to remember the dedication and the deaths of those people that died on that battlefield that day. And the same goes for Nash Farms. In Nash Farms, it may not have been a, a battlefield like Gettysburg, Manassas, Antietam, where thousands of men died that day on both sides. But we need to honor our heritage. I've got lineage here in Georgia. Four or five of my ancestors fought for, for the Confederacy. My ancestor goes all, ancestry goes all the way back to the Revolutionary War, protecting what we believe for, fighting and dying for it. So here in, here in Georgia, you see the, the dedication that the Southern people have for their heritage. It, it, some of them, it's wrapped up in a flag. Some of them, it's wrapped up in a, in a battlefield or their ancestry. But we all believe in our ancestry. We honor our ancestry. And the patches and the symbols on my jacket are my vest are part of that, you know, as, as the Confederate flag. The Confederate flag began as a, as the battle flag of Northern Virginia. And, and also the three-by-five flag was the, was the naval jack. It doesn't, it didn't begin as a symbol of hate. It was picked up by certain organizations and carried as our American flag was picked up and carried by those people. It didn't mean that that's what that flag stood for, and it never will. The Southern people love everyone. We didn't, we didn't fight for slavery. We, we fought because we were being invaded. As Sherman went through Atlanta, all, all the way down to Savannah, burned and pillaged Georgia, and then he offered up Savannah as a Christmas present to our president, to the president at that time, Abraham Lincoln. So the, the, the Confederacy and the pride that it stands for runs deep in Georgia, and we, we are all here to protect that. So Nash Farms is a, is a, is a battlefield that needs to be protected. We need to teach our children what it stands for, what happened there, so that they know the truth about what happened and not something that they may hear from somebody trying to grow hate and to erase the, the history of the South. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. If you will state your name and address.
Thank you, Chair Wood and the Commissioners. First, I want to apologize that I won't be able to, to speak like other people do because my words always tied to my emotions and, and it's hard to separate it. And I think it's so neat when someone can stand up here and talk and their feelings not get involved. But my name is David Golden. I'm from 1707 Palomar Lane, Odessa, Texas. My wife and I drove 19 hours and a little over 1,200 miles to come here, and not out of hate. And it's not really for the, the Confederate flag, but it's about the museum. The museum, we, we came here probably 10 years ago, and it was a, it was a nice museum. It was well balanced in, in the, in the Union and Confederate side. We helped with the, the school kids on that Friday. And the reason that I'd like to, hopefully that you all will bring the, the museum back is it's very nice. And the reason that I'm here is to save the name Battlefield. I know that it, a lot of people call it a skirmish, and police officers will agree probably with this, buzz driving is drunk driving. Whether it's, whether it's just a skirmish or, or a running battle, a battlefield is a battlefield. And I think it needs to be preserved at that because I'm so afraid that if you take that battlefield away from it, that one, one of these days, it'll be subdivided up and you'll do something else with it. It's, it's the most pristine battlefield, I think, that there is in Georgia. And like they said, it was the largest cavalry charge that there ever was. And to speak of that, our, our lineage goes back to Captain Croft's battery of light artillery. There was an uncle, and his name was Mark Golden, and he had three nephews. And one of those nephews would be my great-great-grandfather. So you had Mark, John, Benjamin, and James, and they all served from 1862 to 1865. Well, it's documented that, that Mark was there with Croft Battery. And you can see archaeological digs where they found where the Third, Ninth, and Twenty-Seventh Texas all fought. So to say this, to back up a little bit, Texas has a dog in this fight because of General Saul Ross and the, the Texas Cavalry. General Saul Ross was the governor of Texas, became the president of Texas A&amp;M. There's a university named after him. And for Captain Croft, with our family have served there, it actually is documented in 1864 newspapers, and it says Nash Farms. A farmer put in for restitutions where he buried 500 horses. 500 horses might have 500 riders. Doesn't mean that 500 riders were killed, but you may kill somebody and not kill a horse. I don't know what the balance is. But my, my, I guess my main thing is, and I'd love to say, to save the battlefield name because I believe it is a documented battlefield. Lot better speakers have spoke that said that it's a battlefield. And like I said, it's, whether it's a big battlefield or not, we, in Croft Battery, they had a, a corporal knife that was killed. I think he would think it'd be pretty special to have his name. And coming up here, I think we were on Jonesboro Road. We went, we, I apologize. We went by a, a church, and it's called the County Line Christian Church. And on the sign, it says, "Remember those who gave their all for us." That's on both sides. That's on the Confederate side, that's on the Union side. This was the ones that fought in the Spanish War, any war. They gave their all. And the museum, thank you, sir. The museum balanced that both sides. And like I said, I, I would hate to see it, it gone. And under definitions, I looked it up last night, if you just say Nash Farms Battlefield, battlefield means the field or ground on which a battle is fought, or an area of contention, conflict, or hostile opposition.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
And if you look up battle, it is a sustained fight between a large organi-- oh, I'm sorry.
I don't mean to be disrespectful.
No, ma'am.
But thank you. Thank you. No, thank you. Thank you. Could you please state your name and address, please?
Simeon Nunali. I live in, I'm incorporated in Henry County. File with First Military Police Company out of Wiesbaden, Germany. That flag right there in the corner, I have brothers and sisters still currently dying for that flag right now in Iraq and Afghanistan. The problem that they had with Nash Farms was the fact that that flag was way higher than the American flag. Commissioner Prince, you being a veteran yourself, how would you feel?
Uh, excuse me. Direct your comments to me, please. Thank you.
If there is a flag way higher than the American flag, I have no problem with the Confederate flag. Not one bit whatsoever. If they want to wave it at their own home, by all means, no worries. But for myself, knowing that I got brothers and sisters still currently dying for these people here, everybody here, everybody. We want to talk about wars, let's talk about the war that's currently going on in Iraq and Afghanistan. If you want to talk about wars, let's talk about people that still getting beheaded. Let's talk about everything inside. Let's talk about current events. Let's talk about these things that's happening. Because these are the things that we're talking about or, or we want to still talk about past events. I understand that they trying to say that everybody here is saying that we need to preserve our history. We do, and we need to also look forward into the future. These, we have some people right here in this very audience. Their sons, their daughters are still downrange right now in Iraq, in Afghanistan. No worries. The Confederate flag is way higher than the American flag on Nash Farms. That was my only issue that I had with that, at all. No worries. I serve the people of the United States. I serve Henry County on all levels. And you all do the same thing as well. They can have what they want to have, no worries, but allow them to wave their flag on a privately displayed. That is a county property. I cannot even have a privately-owned pistol or a post, yet alone anything else that's privately on, on government property. It's government property, it's county property. I believe that a lot of research should be done on why they are officially closing. I spoke to the owner of Nash Farms. He said, "He's closing because he's retiring." He said nothing about a flag. He said he's closing because he's retiring, and the county do not have the money to actually pay somebody to uphold the integrity of Nash Farms. That's why he says he's closing. He didn't say nothing about a flag being removed. I stand with Commissioner Clemmons. I stand with every veteran. I stand with anybody that served in any war, period. That is my platform, and that's what it will always be. I do believe that on private, on county property, on government property, there shouldn't be anything privately on there. Just me personally. Now, if it was a county, if it was a county flag, by all means. But it wasn't. It was privately owned. And the last time I checked, I heard that they told them that they could, that they could actually put that privately-owned flag in the museum. You can put the flag in the museum. Well, they went and they decided to release a falsified statement bashing the commissioner. This is a game of politics. This has nothing to do with a flag. I served this country, and to hear people sit here and say that death threats being thrown out at commissioners by people that call themselves patriots, that's the definition of treason. You're, you're, you're giving threats to government officials. That's terrorists. That is terroristic activities. You are the people that we fought downrange. Why were you doing it back here? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. You'll state your--
Resident of McDonough. Mine'd be short. This is from a plaque at our city square. Remember, it's your duty to see the true history of the South presented to future generations. General Robert E. Lee. I ask that you learn the history and the true meaning of our flag and what it really represents. The action of one person to change history is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before you speak, Mr. Tony, if we can name the next five individuals that will come after this next speaker.
Daniel Blackman, Vivian Thomas, Herman Hammonds, Bill Hillsman, and Wayne Swanson, Jr.
Okay. Thank you, sir. If you will state your name and address.
Bill Tony, McDonough. You know, I've been coming before this board for, for five years now, and this is the largest group I think I've ever seen here. It's a total shame that the citizens are not paying more attention to what's going on. This is the reason these things happen. You know, we, we're being, we're being raped, raped by a county water authority. Salaries over there are going rampant. I have an attorney saying that, that nothing can be done. I don't believe that. Things can be done. And y'all, y'all just throwing stuff out there that's not, not really true. We've got a golf course over here. In eight months, lost $66,000. Ms. Clemmons, how come you're not--
If you could explain--
Okay. Uh, Ms. Wood, how come we're not seeing to things like that? As far as taking the flag down, I think we got a lot more important things to be thinking about. I, I don't, I don't know where you're coming from. You, you come in here and you, your own, or her own words, were, "They look at me like I'm a little black girl." That's, that, people don't look at, don't look at you like that. People look at you with respect, but respect is earned. It's not given. It's earned. That's where, that's where we need to take a look at that. This flag thing, I mean, you got a lot of people that come up today, and I'm telling you, I love it. I think people should come and be involved in the government. I really believe in that. But Ms. Clemmons, how come--
If you can direct your comments to me, please.
I mean, Ms. Wood--
Yes?
Uh, you know, you got a water authority. The general manager over at the Water Authority makes almost as much money as the President of the United States. That's ridiculous. Clayton County just got the award of the, the, the state for having the best water authority. He makes 100, I think it's $135,000 a year. Get on board with, get on board with getting things done in the county, the business, not taking a flag down that people want to be there. You know, Ms. Clemmons, I, you know, Ms. Wood--
Thank you.
Excuse me. You know, this right here, how come we're not doing something about this? How come? Now, do you think, do you honestly believe that I want my grandbabies to see all this That's not right. Well, and you know, I've been before this board, and I've mentioned ethics charges that were filed against Ms. Clemmons. And you know, I, I suggested that everything be brought out into the open. It falls on deaf ears. Well, Ms. Clemmons, I've got one thing to say--
If you can direct your comments to me again, please.
I would love to have your resignation. By five this afternoon, you're not deserving to sit on this board. Thank you.
If you can, thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Good afternoon, good morning. If you can state your name and address, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Vivian Thomas, and I do reside in Henry County, Georgia, McDonough. Today, I'm wearing the hat as the first Vice President of the Henry County NAACP. The Henry County NAACP supports the removal and keeping down the Confederate flag from flying in any public parks, any public grounds, where the voters and public dollars and public taxes are paying or own that property. The Confederate flag continues to be a symbol of hate, abuse, bloodshed, and racism. The Confederate flag, from my perspective, is something I live every day. I don't need a history book to tell me what it stood for. I can remember as a child and my father telling me, "Whenever you see that flag, you are not welcome there." And true enough, I am from South Georgia. I did graduate from Henry County High School, not Henry County, Houston High School. I did live in Perry, Georgia. I know all about Hawkinsville, Georgia, Dublin, Georgia. And now I live in Henry County. And that flag continues to follow me, to tell me I'm not welcome in certain areas. People of color have endured horrific terror through slavery. We are not trying to erase our history. We are very proud of our history. Through all of it, through the terror, through the abuse, through the bloodshed, we are still here. We are surviving, and let me tell you, we are thriving. Look at the D.S. today. Think about our President Barack Obama. So through it all, we are still here and we are thriving. And yes, we are being killed every day. And yes, it can be talked about, our young men, their sagging pants. But let me tell you, they are intelligent and they are moving forward. And look at America, because they're coming to lead you as well. The Confederate flag was designed with the intent of making sure that white supremacy stays in place. William Thompson said, "This is the white man's flag." That's what he called it, not me. He designed it. He made that symbol like that. It was created explicitly to make sure we understand the power of the white South. The Henry County NAACP demands that the Confederate flag remains down from any public site owned and paid for by taxpaying dollars that we are part of here in the county. And we are petitioning this commission, this board, to put in place some form of resolution, some form of proclamation, to make sure this stays that way and that we will not have to continue to fight this battle in this county. We are not trying to replace history. We know history. We are not trying to erase history. History has a wonderful place. It has a wealth of knowledge. We know that it can be used for building stones to build upon. But when history is used as mockery, when history is used to mock us, when history is used to demean us, when history is used to put us quote-unquote "in our place" to our own trepidation, yes, we have a problem with history. No other race is forced to live like this. Jews are not forced to live like this. Indians are not forced to live like this. There are lots of other races, but we are the only one, the black Americans, told to walk under a flag, to walk under a symbol that depicts pain, bloodshed, every day in our lives, and that's not right. The question remains to us. How did a private organization was privileged to have free rent, free amenities, and other free perks allowed to operate in a public park that's paid for and paid by taxpayers' dollars? How did they get there? Who allowed it? Who agreed to let this take place? So we're asking you to petition, to do a full investigation, and tell the public how this happened and what will you do to recoup our monies that was lost by supporting this organization. We ask you to look at other organizations and other companies who have taken the time to say they will no longer sell or display any type of emblem that resembles or represents hate. We see it happening all across the nation, from the Wal-Mart's to the Sears, to the Googles, to different states and different counties. So we want you to stand boldly and say, "It's time for it to happen here." Henry County represents everyone, including me, you, and those behind me. So let it rep a everyone in a balanced system. Thank you very much. And we do expect for that flag not to fly in public property.
Thank you. If you would state your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Wayne Swanson. I am also the District Two Board Appointee for Parks and Recreation. I live in Hampton, Georgia. I'm a farmer. This is my family, my farmer-in-training, and my beautiful wife Charmaine. I find it interesting today that the people who caused this issue, who put out a post to the public saying that they were chased out somewhere, are not here. Where are they? Where are they? They put out another statement saying they weren't coming because Jesse Jackson was here. I ain't see Jesse Jackson out here. So, Ms. Wood, where are they? Because they keep sending emails saying that they've been talking to you. They've been negotiating with you. They've been having you as their side, that you are livid that they left. No one asked them to leave. I have been working with Bill Dodd on a plan to update the areas around the battlefield. We have made painstakingly clear, I have made it painstakingly clear with Parks and Rec in the meeting, that everything we wanted to do would be period-specific to enhance the reenactment. I'm going to say that again. Everything we talked about in the museum, I've been in that museum seven or eight times. I love history. Bill Dodd gave my family a personal tour of the museum. We went exhibit to exhibit. We spoke about the things. I asked them, "Why do you guys have a Nathan Bedford Forrest shrine?" He didn't fight, he didn't fight here. He was a phenomenal general. He fought north. Chickamauga, I think, was the closest he came down south. Tennessee, north. Why is there a shrine of him there? I asked, "Anybody know any names of the slaves who lived on this plantation? Is there an exhibit for them?" No. There's a corner, I'm saying a corner, literally a corner, right over there, where they had some eight-by-tens of some black folks. In the corner. Wasn't my place to say something? I was a guest. My job was to help the 10-year plan. And I think leadership, Chair Wood, the moment they announced that they were leaving because they were forced out, you could have released the 10-year plan for Nash Park. And if no one knows what the 10-year plan is, the 10-year plan called for a couple of things, and I want to be specific. One, an all-war museum. Not a Civil War museum, not a World War II museum, an all-war museum. I don't think that happened. I'd also like to know, from what I understand, there may have been an allotment of $42,000 given to this group to get that museum furnished. That museum was beautiful. If you didn't go, I don't know if any of the commissioners went in there besides Commissioner Clemens. We went. I loved it. We have a farmer's market at the museum. Some of the vendors are reenactors. I'm going to say that again. Some of the vendors are reenactors. They did not quit the farmer's market. They still there. They called me like men. And they asked me what's going on. I answered the questions as best I could. But we made arrangements with the museum to help fundraise for the museum by doing farm-to-table dinners inside the museum. How are we getting chased out? The last farmer's market we did on the porch of the museum, in front of the museum. I asked Bill Dodd to open his doors. I sent people personally into the museum because it was a beautiful space, because it's Henry County. No one chased them out. They left on their own. They cut, they ran because a young lady who was the commissioner of that district asked a question. So commissioners can't ask questions? It's a public property, right? It's in her district. My tax dollars, I wouldn't go there. My wife would tell you, when my son, we first moved here eight years ago, seven years ago, she signed my son up for a camp at Nash Park. I was livid. How dare you send my son to a Confederate park? I don't know what they're going to indoctrinate him with. I didn't know it was a public park. I thought that was their private area. Most of the black people that live in my neighborhood, when I told them I was working at the park, they were like, "You can't go there. That's a Confederate park." And I was like, "No, it's a public park." We didn't know because they had a Confederate flag flying there and most of us not going to turn in there. We know what that means. Let's stop acting like we don't know what Confederate monuments mean to black people. But when I did find out, I wanted to help. I didn't cut and run. I didn't make a bunch of statements and not show up at this meeting. I'm here. Where are they?
Thank you. Thank you. If you would state your name and address, please.
Bill Hillsman. I'm the President of the Georgia Pembroke Region Canine Search and Rescue. I'm following up from Barry Roland, where the dogs was told they could not come in the building for training. He has been training dogs for Henry County for 30 years. This is the ideal place. He cleans up before and he cleans up better after he leaves. I'm supporting him to stay with his training classes at Nash Farms. We also train our dogs over there. We work for the police departments, Henry County, DeKalb County, Houston County, wherever we're called. We train our dogs there. I'm afraid if the dogs are kicked out of there, then they'll say, "No dogs on the park." And that's a place where we go to train. And while we train, we have seen other people walking their dogs, the citizens of Henry County, and maybe Clayton County. But it's a good place for us to take our dogs. And I just hate to see where one person can say, "You can't do this." I would say it would take all six of you commissioners or a vote of the citizens of Henry County to say what can be done there. But that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, if you, we'll call the next five names of those before the next gentleman arrives.
Grady Vickery, J.T. Williams, Ashley Roell, Bishop Irvin Brier, and Janees K. Rutledge.
Thank you, sir. You may approach and state your name and address, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, my name is Herman Hammonds. I live in unincorporated Stockbridge, Georgia. And I stand here before you today, Chair. I wear two hats in this county. I'm with the NAACP as the member chair. I'm also the vice chair of the Henry County Democratic Party. And I sat here today and watched our Henry County neighbors hold up signs saying they want Commissioner Dee Clemens to resign. Now, I helped Commissioner Clemens run for office to get elected. And I growed up with Commissioner Dee Clemens. We from the same neighborhood. I know her character. And I totally disagree with people trying to character assassinate her. This lady has very good character. Has always had good character. From the neighborhood we grew up in, we are the talented ten. No doubt. And I know every decision that she tried to make for Henry County, she has, she go through a forethought checklist to make sure she doing the right thing. Now, when you talk about history, okay, let's break down this word, "history." His story, her story. So when you talk about history, you're talking about someone's version. You could pick up the King James Bible. It's the King James Version. You got different Bibles. So be, let's be clear. When we talking about history over a flag, it's certain people's history. It ain't everybody's history. Everybody's history is not accurately reported on this flag issue. So we need to remember that when we talk about history. That's their story. It's not everybody's story. And so you want to talk about being a divided county, that flag is a division. We didn't cause it. And we had a gentleman earlier talking about business coming to this county. Well, guess what? If they know you parading flags around the county like that, they ain't going to want to come anyway. So removing the flag is the right thing to do. It belongs in a museum. On public property. That's wrong. We all know it's wrong. So it need to be fixed. It need to go in a museum. We don't want to erase no one's heritage or history. I mean, these people have to understand that. It's very offensive. I'm offended by it. I wouldn't want to go upon public property and they parading a rebel flag. That's unacceptable. It's 2017. We need to change that. That don't work no more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If you would state your name and address, please.
I'm J.T. Williams, 105 Wexford Court in Stockbridge, Georgia. Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much for letting me speak. I love Henry County. I've came here 30 years ago. I did a lot of investigation before I came because I wanted to develop some land. And it was exactly what I was looking for. Looked all over the southeast United States, but this is where I wanted to be. For the, these last 30 years, even though I've developed land in other communities and other areas, I've always maintained my primary residence right here. I love the people of Henry County. Red, yellow, black, and white. But it really hurts me when I see confrontation and when I see misrepresentation, misunderstanding. It hurts me personally. And I know it hurts a lot of other people. I have a lot of confidence in all six of you. And so I'm hoping that this can be resolved properly. The, I want to go back in the history a little bit. I think it was the first speaker that said something about going to the rear of the bus, the back of the bus. Most of the people here don't remember those, but we had bus boycotts back in the 50s or 60s. And that's 1950s or 60s. And all over the South, African-Americans were forced to sit in the back of the bus, or the rear of the bus, until they had enough. And then they decided to boycott the buses. And that's why they got the bus boycott names. That happened all over the South, particularly in the capital cities of all of the southern states, except one. And that was in Florida. Capital city of Florida is Tallahassee, Florida. And it didn't happen there because of my father. My father was the mayor of Tallahassee. And he called his friends from both sides of the issue together. And they resolved it in one meeting. And I'm hoping that's what can happen here. I'm hoping that the six of you in executive session, not with public and all of the different areas issued, but in an executive session, along with the board members of the museum, and hope you can resolve the issue. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Can I, do you, would you state your name and address, please?
My name's Bishop Irvin Brier. I live at Barrington Parkway, Stockbridge, Georgia. You take my place? Okay, good, good. One of the things that has impressed me too much is that I have lived in the United States of America for 71 years, until I left high school in a place called Beacon, New York. Until I left high school in a place called Beacon, New York, 60 miles north of New York City, a lot of the things that I have experienced, my father tried to keep me away from. One of them is this divide over all of the things that we may be talking about today. Oh, I want to say something else before I go forward. Bishop's not my name. That's a title that I have from a church called the Christian Church. And one of the things that we have learned is that we have been divided over a lot of things in this nation. So I decided that I was going to be a history major. And I did that. And I've had a chance to teach in some of the biggest universities in this country. Liberty, Queens College, black history, church history. And the church history involved also the history of religion. As a chaplain in the United States military, not all of my time was spent as a chaplain. I spent 10 years carrying a weapon. Got out, came back in to the military as a chaplain. Retired as a chaplain. Everyone that walked in my office or was told to come see me, saw me. Not because of my religious tenet, because of the things that I do for people. We even had to get into discussion about a man that was killed, a young man that was killed, whether or not he should be buried at the national cemetery because he wasn't a known religion. And in fact, his blood was spilled while he wore a uniform. So now they allow the symbol on gravestones there. Things change because people change. I was thinking about what I wanted to say. Over there is the American flag. It has evolved. This is the Constitution of the United States, the Bill of Rights, all of the governing things. And I was telling somebody I met from Texas named David that where it came here, that I didn't want to speak to specifically what's going on. But I do think that it would be a good idea if we got a group together. And I'd like to sit on that committee where we find out things. Let's, let's put to rest whether or not it's a historical landmark or not. Let's, let's put to rest what things separate us. But there are more things that bring us together than separate us. And we should be able to do it. I'm looking at the dynamics of the people sitting in front of me. Should be able to work together, make decisions together, rather than flame things up. When I retired, I said I'm going to live in Henry County because this is my last duty call here in Henry County. I renovated a building that used to be a, a place that made tapes for a church. I'm now over seven states. And all the time, there's these things. When I was going to high school, the history book had one page about African-Americans. And it showed some slaves. One page. And yet, when I went out and became a historian, the history is vast. We can't even live without each other if we didn't take all of the things that we all have created in this country. And we need to put down a hate piece. I go up Lanier Boulevard from 42, and there's a flag for Mr. Trump, the president. And then there's a flag above the American flag, which you don't do. And then there's a flag for South Carolina. And it's a battle flag for the Confederacy. That's his property. He has, he wants to do that, it's fine. In my community, we don't allow any flag except the American flag so that we don't have all these unnecessary disputes. I imagine our children are trying to say, "Now, I can't go out and play with other people because of a flag." I would like you to appoint a commission. I will sit on it. I'd like to meet the people from Nash Farm. If it's a historical landmark, then we need to establish that so there's no question. I think it's time that we find that sitting together and resolving things is better than standing up and clapping and cheering people on. We need to get together. There's a lot more things we need to do in Henry County to continue to live together as one of them.
Thank you, sir. If you would state your name and address, please.
Ashley Rell, at Liven, McDonough. Good morning, Chair Wood and Commissioners. I used to work for Henry County Parks and Recreation as the special events coordinator. I want you, I actually want to take a tourism slant on this. The International Rotary Club is celebrating 100 years this year. And Atlanta has been chosen as the host city. Four, 40,000 members of, from all over the world of the Rotary Club are coming here this weekend. And none of them are coming to Henry County. And that's sad. They will visit the World of Coca-Cola, the Delta Flight Museum, the College Football Hall of Fame, the Georgia Aquarium. And the Fox Theater is holding a special screening of Gone With the Wind. Monday, 200 of them will come to Stately Oaks Plantation in Jonesboro to taste southern food and to tour the house there that was built in 1839. Clayton County is getting the revenue we should be getting. I've been a lead docent at Stately Oaks for six years. I have met people from all over the world. They are fascinated with our history. They come here to see it. We don't seem to grasp how fascinating we are to the world. We're missing out on this opportunity. We've, we've got to find a way to work together to honor our history, our culture. I volunteered at the, with the Friends of Nash Farm Battlefield, even after I got laid off from the county. I belong to a school group, I'm sorry. I belong to a historical dance group. We have taught about the clothing and the dances of the period for school-aged children. We've got to find a way, I say it, to work together to make this work. The museum is important. The battlefield is important. Our history is important. And it's important to tourism. Like I say, we're missing out on a lot of, of potential dollars from people. I say 40,000 members of the Rotary Club are, are coming here this weekend. And we're not getting any of that. And that's sad. Also have some documents to share with the board. And I apologize I didn't make enough copies, but there's the original on top. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. If you'll state your name and address, please.
Thank you. Grady Vickery from Delonaga, Georgia. And thank you, Ms. Wood and this commission. It was interesting to note that we started our meeting with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance to the symbol of our collective greatness of our, of our country. And I would wonder if someone, someone maybe influential enough, who would demand it, the symbol be removed because it might offend them? Or that prayer would offend them? That's certainly happened in our schools. I congratulate you and I take my hat off to you, symbolically, for upholding these. These are very dear to us, as, as is the recollection of things that were dear to our ancestors. Flags are a symbol of what we are supposed to believe. A lot of people find the different symbols that we use to be either glorious or inglorious, sometimes very offensive. Show of hands, if we could replace all Confederate flags with... Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Show of hands, if we could replace all Confederate flags or symbols of hate, associated with hate and that symbolism with the federal flag, who would, who would be for that in this room? Who, anybody? Show of hand. So this symbol is not a symbol of hate, animosity, or racism, although the symbol on my back sometimes is characterized as thus. The problem I have with that is that race is often brought into play here. And all symbols can be hijacked. All symbols can be malign. All symbols can be distorted. Evidence of this goes all the way back to the 20s. This is a group of people that I do not associate with, will not associate with. I deplore their meaning and purpose for their stated purpose of some type of supremacy, which they're not. They continue to use the symbols that we're sworn to defend and fight with, to fight for, that guarantee our liberties, your civil liberties, the liberties of our country. Look at this. Should that flag, Mr. Holmes, be taken out? Because it's offensive. Look, it's offensive. By your definition, that is offensive. It's offensive to me. And I'm offended. I truly am. I'm not offended because of some color that I'm associated with. I'm not an ethnically, ethnistically pure person. I'm Apache Creek Indian primarily and Scott. The symbol that is on my back. And it goes on to this day. This right here. Any symbol can be misused. The war between the states, the war of Northern aggression, was not fought over slavery. That's clear. You have a jewel in Nash Farms. I'm a historian, a living historian, as many others have stated. You have a jewel that should be admired, preserved, cultivated because you have something that's extremely unique. You have a place where between 500 and 700 men that were all Americans clashed and did their best to outdo one another. They killed each other. The evidence is everywhere. All you have to have is a metal detector and a shovel. It's been well documented there, in many other places. But how are we going to teach what it was in the environment that they, that they were fighting under? How could you, how could you possibly tell someone that it was just about the Confederacy and somehow or another it was tied to slavery? When in 1775, it was legal and all the slaves on slave ships were brought here bearing that flag or a symbol thereof of the United States. And I ask that you restore Nash Farms to its proper battlefield designation and remember the cause of my ancestors. My grandfather was killed at Kennesaw Battlefield.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comment. Okay, I'll get a check-in with our county clerk. I know Ms. Rutledge is, I guess, the last one. How many more do we?
Ms. Rutledge is number 30. And there are 55, so we have 25 left. And it's 12.
Okay, so we'll take the break at 12, as noted in the agenda. Okay. Ms. Rutledge, if you may come forth, please.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. I'm Jane Askew Rutledge. I currently reside in McDonough, Georgia, in the Loloe community of Ola. But I'm originally from Stockbridge. I'm the granddaughter of the first mayor of Stockbridge. Proud to be a hintin' askew. I'm here today because I want to see this county put this whatever is going on to rest. I supported Dee. Dee supported me. Dee Clemmons asked me, Ms. Woods, to give tours to the schoolchildren because she knew my historical background of Henry County. I have talked to you since before and after the election about doing history, tourism, enlightenment of the true history we have hidden here in Henry County. Pies, cakes, and Nash Farms is what I signed up for. Number two was splashed. What I'm really concerned about is why we are wasting tax dollars on the pie chart, giving so much to the Board of Education, costing us taxes. Number two is eminent domain. We got Nash Farms through eminent domain. I got more history in my little finger than probably everybody sitting on that board has got because I go back to 1794. I'm up here because of my father, Virgil Urias Askew, and my black grandmother, Rose Albright. I have never, ever been raised to see race, color, national origin. And by the way, where's the gay rights flag? I'm so tired of hearing about the flags. We got money tied up. My property in Stockbridge was taken by eminent domain. We took Nash Farms by eminent domain. Just put me and Buddy Welch in the same room and see where eminent domain goes. There is no way that I'm going to see the money we got tied up in Nash Farms go down the drain. If we need to shut down the Nash Farms market, if we need to shut down the museum, what else we going to shut down? Let's shut down the dog park. Let's have a teesplash, put in some roads. Where we went wrong is we took the money out of the teesplashed. The one set splashed, where's Steve Cash? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Steve Cash and I are the only two that are here today that was working in the county, on county government, when we started the penny tax. You had a penny on a sign. No, we took that money. We bought cemeteries. We bought parks. We bought golf courses. We bought stuff we didn't need. We're living beyond our means in Henry County. We need to do our needs. It's my husband tells me before my wants. We've been together 49 years. I'm going to get what I need until he tells me I'm going to get what I earn my wants. Okay? There's nobody in this room that I cannot sit down and talk to, I cannot sit down and be friends with. I know what it feels to be branded as a racist from the 212 election, thanks to Dale Rutledge. Okay? There are several people sitting out here in this audience that can tell you who I really and truly am. I'm here to work with Ms. June Woods. Here to work with Dee. I'm here to work with Blake. I'm here to work with Gary, Johnny, and Bruce to solve this issue. I don't care who I've got to work with to bring money into the county through tourism and tell the history. But dear Jesus Christ, I am a lifelong Presbyterian Stockbridge member. I'm proud of my heritage. And there is no way I'm going to see a racist issue from the 60s ruin what we've worked for. And as Grandma Rose Albright would say, "When you got time to sit down, I'll explain to you."
All right, thank you. We will now, again, how many more do we have remaining for public comments?
25.
We have 25 remaining. So therefore, we will adjourn for recess until 12:30. And now we'll accept a motion from the board to adjourn.
Shall move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Your second, all in favor. Thank you. We'll reconvene at 12:30. Thank you. We'll reconvene at 12:30.